Yeah, but pen.
Oh my God.
I got plenty of pens. I've been off all week, so I'm like. All right, it's now 7:01. We're gonna officially go ahead and call the the meeting to order. First piece of business, we'll do roll call, starting on my right, and when you introduce yourself, if you can give your favorite Thanksgiving dish.
My name is Patrick Kehoe, and my favorite Thanksgiving dish is mashed potatoes.
There we go.
Good evening, everyone. My name is Anupam Chuksedu. Thanks for being here. My favorite dish is roasted cauliflower.
And I'm Sean Wilson. My favorite dish is dressing, not to be confused with stuffing. Big difference.
Hello, my name is Doug Brooks, and my favorite is mashed potatoes.
Patty McCoyn, and mine is also dressing, because there is a huge difference.
Big difference. All right, and Dr. Merritt?
Yes, my favorite is mac and cheese. And I am so grateful and thankful for the season. I'd like to ask the remaining members of my staff. Diane, how about tonight? You just jump right in, share your mic, and say, what is your Diane Robertson, my assistant?
Diane Robertson, I assist the superintendent of the year on a committee, right? Stuffing, so I feel like there's something wrong with me.
You could, we're gonna share some dressing also.
Yes?
Yes, I'm sorry. Mr. Brandon?
Good evening, everyone. Nick, am I saying my dish too?
Yeah.
Yes.
Okay, well, good evening, everyone. Nick Brandon, the Executive Director of Communications and Marketing. My favorite Thanksgiving dish is sleep.
After the meal.
Hi, I'm Debbie Piaz. I'm the Chief Finance and Operations Officer, and my favorite dish is pumpkin pie.
I'm Beth Aril, Chief Academic and Innovation Officer, and mine is actually sweet potato pie. I'm a southern kind of cooking kind of girl.
I'm Shante Langford. I am Chief Human Resource Officer, and I guess I'll go with German chocolate cake.
All right.
Ooh.
Good evening. I'm Liz Vartanian Gibbs, Assistant Superintendent Student Family Engagement, and I'm all about the dessert also.
All right, all right. Please join me for a pledge of allegiance. Pledge allegiance.
To the flag of the United States of America, and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
All right. So first up, action item 231123, adoption of agenda, approval of consent agenda.
Mr. President, I move that we consider adoption of the agenda and approval of the consent agenda, action item 231123.
Is there a second?
Second.
Okay, perfect. Dr. Merritt, if you can walk us through?
Yes, this evening, our consent agenda consists of human resources transactions. Since our last time together, we have new hires, AKA champions, for your consideration this evening, as well as leaves and resignations and retirements. Finally, we have tenure recommendations from the Human Resources Department. We have approval of the minutes from the following meetings: regular minute meetings on October the 25th, 2022; the special meeting minutes on October the 26th, 2022; special meeting minutes from November the 10th, 2022; and finally, the special meeting minutes from November the 15th, 2022.
Thank you. Are there any questions? All right, all in favor, say yes.
Yes.
Any opposed, say no. All right, it was moved by Member Kehoe, seconded by Member Brooks, and it passes 5-0. So on to Human Resources, new hires, leave, resignations, retirements, and tenure recommendations.
All right, thank you, President Wilson. So this evening, we have 10 new hires with us. So when I read your or call your name, could you please stand up, and my partner in crime here, Dr. Liz, is going to hand you your candy bar. So Michaela Adams, who is joining us, and I don't believe she's here, she's the one who may not be here this evening, as a speech correction person who will work at Liberty and Pioneer. And then I have Courtney Bumbalo, who will be Resource Room at Field. Courtney has her BA from Western Michigan University. Andrea Cruz Santiago, who will be math at Discovery, and she has her BA from Cedarville University. Cheryl Rive, homebound teacher for Plymouth Goals. She has her BA from Eastern Michigan, her MA from University of Nevada, Las Vegas. Not here, all right. And then we have Dana Sandeley. I try this all day. I practice, I swear. I'm so sorry. Sandeley, did I get it right? Say it again.
Sunduckley.
Sunduckley, okay. I apologize. Welcome. She's gonna be our math interventionist at Holstein and Miller. She has her BA from University of Michigan and her master's from Western Governors University. All right, and that's our teaching staff. So we also have this evening Susan Provizano, who many of you may be familiar with. She is joining us and being recommended for the Executive Assistant to the Chief Academic Officer. Susan has been with the district since 2016, if I got it right there, Susan, and has her degrees from Wash and from Eastern. Welcome, again. And then next, I have Kristin Farkas. There you are, Kristin. Kristin has joined us as the Assistant Principal of Activities and Athletics at Canton High School, also known as the APAA. Kristin comes from us from Escanaba Schools, where she was the athletic director there. She has her degrees from both U of M in elementary ed and in math. Welcome, Kristin. Next, we have Sonia Dixon, who is being recommended for the payroll supervisor position. Sonia joins us from Livonia Schools. She also has a background of being at many other school districts, and she has her BA in finance from Bombay Mubai University. Welcome. All right, next, we have McKenna Pierce, who is being recommended for the Executive Assistant to the Assistant Superintendent of Student and Family Engagement. McKenna comes with her bachelor's from Central Michigan University. Welcome. And last but not least, we have Kitty Yumroot. Did I get it right, Kitty?
You got it right.
I tried. I practiced these during the day. Kitty is being recommended for the Special Education Supervisor Position. We are super excited to have her. Kitty has her BA from MSU. She has her master's from EMU and her Ed Specialist Degree from Wayne State. Welcome, Kitty. All right, so now we have five teachers who are being recommended for tenure, so I just want to insert from each of their principals. So Ariel Rombowski, who is a teacher at Liberty, James Hunter writes, "It was with pleasure that I recommend Ariel Rombowski for tenure. Ariel has been part of the Liberty team for many years and has been committed to building the choir program. Ms. Rombowski has been intentional in providing students with well-rounded choral experiences by infusing music from all cultures and historical backgrounds into choir concerts. Moreover, Ms. Rombowski helps students make connections between film and music composition. Ms. Rombowski also continues to develop student voices, who love singing by providing solo performances during concerts. The cherry on the top would be Ms. Rombowski's ability to combine all three grade levels into one performance. It is always great to see the final product and how it all pieces together. I look forward to Ms. Rombowski's continued development of the choral program, as well as being a positive member of the Liberty team, moving our building culture forward." Congratulations on your tenure, Ariel. Next, we have Emily Hawthorne, who's a teacher at Espister Elementary. I'm sorry, I said that wrong. Emily Hawthorne is the principal. Cheryl Dunn is the teacher. I am writing to recommend Cheryl Dunn for tenure with Plymouth Canton Community Schools. Cheryl Dunn is Espister's English Language Development Teacher. Cheryl is an advocate for our families and students to ensure that they have everything they need to be successful at school. Cheryl is a bright spot in the student's day and is intentional about building relationships and making connections with our students. Cheryl is an asset to our MTSS team and a strong collaborative partner with classroom teachers to ensure we are doing everything we can to support students. So congratulations to Cheryl. Next, we have Jacqueline Koziac, and she is with Dana Jones, who is the Director over Early Childhood Education. "It is my pleasure to recommend Jacqueline Koziac for tenure. Jacqueline is both an outstanding teacher and a leader with the early childhood program. She brings a wealth of knowledge about best practices to use with the preschool students, as well as the high school students who participate in the early childhood classroom at PSEP. Jackie excels at using technology with her students and to create classroom content for their use at school and at home. She has written and received multiple grants and seeks out an opportunity to support her students and our department. We are fortunate to have Jackie as a member of our team and an employee of the district. Congratulations to Jacqueline." Patricia Snyder, who's an English teacher at Salem High School. Ms. Villarosa writes, "Patricia Snyder is an amazing teacher with many positive qualities. The quality I admire most in Patty is the ease at which she develops relationships with her students. Observing her classroom is truly a pleasure. There is definitely mutual respect between students and teachers and among all students. Patty is enthusiastic about everything she teaches and passes this enthusiasm to her students. Salem High School is lucky to have her as a teacher on our staff." Congratulations to Patricia. And lastly, we have Denise Strube, who is an elementary classroom teacher at Bentley. And Jan Douglas writes, "It is with great confidence that I recommend Denise Strube for tenure. Ms. Strube is an extraordinary educator dedicated to creating a nurturing environment for students while establishing high academic expectations. She constantly demonstrates understanding the needs of each individual student so that she can appropriately support them in meeting their goals. As a result, students thrive in her classroom. In addition, Ms. Strube is a collaborative colleague who works with her grade level team to align instruction to the Bentley School Improvement Plan. It is with pleasure to have Denise Strube on staff at Bentley Elementary." And then again, congratulations to Denise, and that concludes the HR portion of hires and tenure recommendations.
Thank you, Ms. Langford. This evening, celebrating success will be presented by Member Kehoe.
Celebrating success this evening, we'll honor Ms. Barbara Rutteki. I'm sorry, Rutteki. PSEP Business Academy Teacher and Leader for her recent achievement of being named Michigan Virtual's 2022 Online Mentor of the Year. This award is granted to one mentor each year and is demonstrated who has demonstrated excellence in teaching and enhanced student success in the online classroom, and we know how much of a challenge that's been over the last couple of years. During the COVID pandemic, Barbara's adaptability as an educator saw her help hundreds of students who had taken advantage of online education opportunities through PCCS's partner, Michigan Virtual's remote offerings. Barbara is exactly the kind of dedicated teacher that families have come to count on when they choose PCCS and were very proud of her success. Kim Villarosa, Salem High School Principal, was not able to join us this evening, but she has written the following tribute about Ms. Rutteki and the positive impact teachers like her have on PSEP students. Please join us. Joining us to read this tribute is PCCS Executive Director of Communications and Marketing, Nick Brandon.
Thank you, Treasurer Kehoe. Ms. Villarosa wrote, "Barb is very deserving of the Extra Miler Award. She was recently honored as the Michigan Virtual's Mentor of the Year for the 2021-22 school year. Barb consistently communicated with students, families, and MVU teachers to ensure students were supported to have the best opportunity for their students. As a direct result of Barb's persistence, many students successfully passed their classes that may not have if it wasn't for her support. Barb's success as a mentor is one of many examples of what she does as a teacher that makes her an extra miler. She is kind, caring, and supportive of all students on a daily basis. Barb takes the success of her students personally and builds positive relationships with each student that she encounters. She teaches business and CTE classes, which prepare many students for success in the workplace after graduation from high school. Barb is also a very important member of the Salem High School staff. She is one of the first people to step in and lend support if we are short of substitutes. In addition, in any type of situation in which assistance is needed with student supervision outside of class, such as after school, during lunch, or passing time, Barb is always there to support administrators and fellow teachers. Barb is truly a pleasure to work with and a vital part of the daily operation of Salem High School. Congratulations, Barb."
On behalf of the Board of Education, I present Ms. Barbara Rutteki with the Mary Beth Carroll Extra Miler Award for going the extra mile to provide a positive learning environment for all of her students. Ms. Rutteki, would you like to say anything about this recognition?
I first wanted to thank Kim Villarosa for allowing me the opportunity to do this. The teachers at Michigan Virtual for really being there for their students as well and for nominating me. I'd also like to say thank you to Lauren Cummings. She was my cohort and partner in crime during this, and we both worked side by side during this. Chris Major basically told us what to do, and we followed what she said and worked together to plan it together. So I just appreciate everything. Thank you. This is awesome. Made my day. Thank you.
All right, congratulations again. On to Board Committee Reports and Action. So first up is the President's Report. Other board members have a copy, and then also we'll project it on the screen. So we have a really, really heavy agenda this evening, so I'll be brief with my report. First and foremost, I want to congratulate Member McCoyn and also Member Sedu on being re-elected to the Board of Education. Also, I'd like to acknowledge new board members Judy Westra and Cheryl Picard. They're here this evening. If you can raise your hand really high. And I also want to take a moment to thank Member Brooks for your service. Long service, amazing service, and also Member Chastings. So, you know, deep impact around, and I know that the community as a whole is truly appreciative of your service. So thank you all. Just as a reminder, we'll ultimately be onboarding the new Board of Education members over the next month and a half or so, with them ultimately taking their seats in January. Board of Education Newsletter, Member Sedu has been leading that up. I did put my President's Letter in there this afternoon, so you probably haven't seen it, but that means it's complete now. And so we'll get that out this month or December, early December at the latest, so excited about that. We've been really busy in between the last board meeting, so we've worked with the Superintendent to land on Dr. Merritt's goals and objectives for this year. We'll present that a little bit later. Also, same thing with the Board of Education goals and objectives. And then we've continued to do a bunch of outreach. So I know we had another community forum, and perhaps, Member Sedu, you can bring us up to speed on what the forum was about. And what's next? I think we have another forum this year, or was that the last forum?
We were trying to schedule another one, but we have not landed on a date. But I'd be happy to give an update on our last community forum, which was around family and community engagement. It was held at Erickson Elementary on October 27th. It was facilitated by Vice President Chastings and Member McCoyn. We had also Superintendent Dr. Merritt with us, along with five community members, one student, so a total of 10 people. We started the meeting with cake, celebrating Dr. Merritt's recent award of Superintendent of the Year, so could not pass up that opportunity to make sure that the community knew what a champion we have in our superintendent. We had a great discussion around what's working well and what we can do to support our students through the new Student and Family Engagement Unit, along with the partnerships that were shared at the last board meeting. We had lively discussions around how do we get more community members involved? And in addition to what's already happening, some of the suggestions were having students do updates in addition to what the adults are doing. People love to see kids in action, so we thought that was a great recommendation, and we'll take that to the SBA along with other outreach efforts. Another great suggestion was print outreach, which we let go of for a while ago. And I want to thank John for being part of that forum, and I believe those are the only ones that are here today. But, you know, we talked about how we rely on social media and emails and updates through our website, but there is a large community out there that is still interested in our school district, but may not get updates because they're not connected to us through social media or our YouTube channel or emails. So we did talk about having some sort of a print outreach, because we want all community members in the Plymouth Canton area to know the great work that's happening. So we will be working with Dr. Merritt and the other board members on what does that look like? And I think that was it. We had, like I said, a great discussion. People stayed after the time, which tells you that people were definitely engaged, and I want to thank everyone that was present at that last forum.
Fantastic, thank you. I do want to commend just all of the board members for leading these forums. You know, it takes a lot of work to plan them, but it's a commitment that the board made a couple of years ago and been diligent on continuing the outreach, so well done to everyone who's participated in them. Lastly, is just 88.1, The Park. Thanks for giving pledge. I was able to be a part of that. I spent a couple hours on air with the students. It's a lot harder than you may think. But luckily, I was with pros, right, who kind of coached me through the whole process. But it ran November 7th through the 12th. The goal, my understanding is that the goal was 20,000. They actually exceeded that goal and reached 22,000, so well done by the students and all the staff. And with that, that will end the President's Report. Next up, we'll be SPA with Members Sedu.
That was quick. We had our last SPA meeting, November 2nd, and again, really big group of community members that were highly engaged. And our topics were, we had a big discussion around equitable grading practices. The secondary staff, along with Dr. Merritt, shared the rationale as to why this topic is important, and a plan to engage additional staff members around this topic. Dr. Merritt will bring this topic back to SPA once the staff has had time to do additional outreach and engage more staff. We also talked about new course proposals, which are actually part of today's agenda. That includes the 11th and 12th grade ELA year-long courses to align with all aspects of the ELA standards. And the rationale behind that was to align all of the ELA standards, so they're not separate reading in one semester class, writing in one semester class. And there was another course proposal added, which was Understanding the World Through Mathematics. This got a lot of excitement, because it's really talking about the application of mathematics, and again, giving our students another opportunity to gain math credits in the years 11th and 12th grades. We also dedicated some time to board goals, which was brought to larger board. And our next meeting is January 18th in this room at 5:00 PM. I hope you all can join us.
Thank you, Secretary Sedu. On to Policy Committee with Member McCoyn.
Thank you. So we actually met tonight, just before this meeting, and we discussed renaming existing facilities, mascots, logos. There was a little bit of disconnect between the administrative guidelines and the policy. We pretty much talked that through, but we have a discussion on that later in the agenda, so we'll get to that then. We finished up with the school visitors policy, and we discussed the interviews for the community members on the Policy Committee. Again, because it's the best committee, we had seven applications for community members. So we'll be scheduling the interviews and getting this done in December. And then our new business, we are taking a look at the Superintendent Evaluation Policy, which was put into effect in 1995, so it is wildly out of date and does not align with current state law or practice. So we'll be revisiting that. Our next regular meeting will be January 24th, 2023, because we, generally speaking, take off December. And it is down the hall in the collaboration space at 5:30. Everybody is, of course, welcome to join us. Thank you.
Fantastic, thank you. On to FNO with Treasurer Kehoe.
So I think we all know that the FNO Committee is not the best committee, that Student Voice in Action has eclipsed all of the committees that we have. We did meet last Thursday here, 5:00 PM here in this room, and we reviewed the, some of the proposals that we'll see coming up this evening, including the bond issuance, the issuance of our second series of bonds as part of the 2022 bonds, as well as the approval of a new snowplow and gator for the PSEP campus, which is needed immediately as part of that process. We also reviewed some of our candidates that are interested in participating in the FNO Committee. We have five candidates. Two of them were able to come that evening, and we have two more that will be coming to our next meeting on December 8th. We don't take time off. We work all the time. And we're meeting on December 8th at 5:00 PM here in this room, where we'll be interviewing those other three candidates, as well as talking about the exciting topic of fiber and fiber maintenance.
Riveting, truly riveting.
Come join us for that exciting topic.
All right, thank you. Next up, Student Voice in Action Committee. The next meeting will be Monday, December 12th, but we actually have a couple of our members here this evening to provide an update. So if you guys can step to the mic, introduce yourselves, and take it away.
Good evening, everyone. My name is Nyla Brown, and I'm a junior at Plymouth High School. And I'd also like to say that my favorite Thanksgiving dish is also mac and cheese.
Hello, my name is Josh Patterson. I'm a freshman at Plymouth, and we are members of the Student Voice in Action Committee. And my favorite Thanksgiving, oh my gosh, my favorite Thanksgiving dish is rolls.
We are excited to announce that we have finally finished the design and planning phase of the SBA Committee, and we will be officially transitioning to the formal SBA Committee, which will kick off at our first meeting next month. We met for the last time this month as a planning committee to finalize the accepted candidates. Dr. Liz has emailed the candidates with regard to their acceptance status and sent out a survey asking them to verify their commitment to the committee. We want to extend a heartfelt thank you to all of the people who worked to bring this committee from conception to formal kickoff. First, we would like to thank our school administrators like Dr. Merritt, Dr. Liz Vartanian Gibbs, and Ms. Voss. Next, we would like to thank the school board for supporting this initiative, and we would specifically thank President Wilson, Secretary Chuck Sedu, and Trustee Christensen for the tireless support throughout this process. Next, thank you to the other PCCS staff members who have helped us, including Nick Brandon and his communications team, the principals, and the staff at the print shop for printing our materials. Finally, we want to thank all the students who volunteered their time to enable the creation of this committee.
Over the last month, members of the SBA team have attended many meetings as representatives of the committee. First, we joined Dr. Merritt, Secretary Chuck Sedu, Vice President Chastings, and Trustee McCoyn at the community forum. Then, we participated in the PSEP Community Open House, where we provided information about the committee's several community members, families, and students. We have also started attending some other PCCS Board of Education Subcommittee meetings in order to gain a better understanding of their activities. We attended the last SPA, FNO, and Policy Meeting just tonight. Thanks to all SBA Planning Committee members who worked over the summer and into the fall to get SBA to the place we are today.
Our next meeting is on December 12th at 6:00 PM. The specific location may change as we're investigating the need for a bigger room to host the entire committee going forward.
Thanks to everyone who has supported us and enabled us to get this far. We appreciate everyone. We appreciate everyone's support and guidance throughout.
Thank you.
Fantastic. Thank you, guys. No words. No words. You guys, great job. Great job. Yeah, really excited about Student Voice in Action. And just as a reminder to the community as a whole, so often, you know, the agenda items that are brought forth to this meeting, it's really the, you know, end result of hours, in some cases, hours and hours of dialogue that happen in committee. So as a reminder, even though you may not have applied to formally be on one of these committees as a community member, you can still come to any committee meeting that you'd like. So once again, if you want to get deep into some of it, wait, what was it, Patrick? That's on the agenda?
Fiber and fiber maintenance.
So if you really want to go deep into fiber maintenance.
Especially important after Thanksgiving dinner.
That's right. That's right. You can come to FNO. So just as a reminder. All right. On to the Superintendent Report with Dr. Merritt.
All right. I just want to also echo what I just heard in terms of our students being the most important reason that we are all here, and I continue to be so proud of you and your efforts and accomplishments. So just thank you for your voice, lending your voice to all of these activities as we move forward and strengthen our district for you. And tonight, we're really talking about what does that look like through the lens of the learner profile? So I'm going to ask all of you to get in that spirit of innovation and move towards a presentation this evening that will take place here in person, as well as with our virtual partner. If you remember Ms. Gaynell Lyman, she's going to join us this evening. We're going to just give a high-level overview of this learner profile process. And so if we're going to see the slides as well, we'll get creative here. Just kind of taking us back to this learner profile, we know it is no secret that our society is rapidly changing. And really, the expectations for our students to be prepared for the workforce have ignited us as educators to really expand our definition of what it truly means to provide an exceptional education for every student here in PCCS. This education not only propels them to excellence, as is stated in our vision, but it really prepares them for a productive and a rewarding future and a life beyond PCCS. And because of this goal, we've been on this journey for the last few years to develop a learner profile. And this profile is truly intended to capture the skills and the dispositions that our community came together and said that we feel are necessary in order for our students to thrive in our increasingly diverse and interconnected society. So tonight, we are so excited to be able to talk about this work of the learner profile. Again, this profile connects so strongly to every one of our strategic goals in our dynamic plan. And as we work to ensure that our students are successful in becoming life-ready, the strategic objectives in particular that we focus on, that we see before here, not only help to develop them with deep content knowledge, but also durable skills, as well as the mindset that empower them to thrive in this world beyond PCCS. Again, it is so impossible to predict how our local, as well as our global life and our work environments will adapt and change even the next five years, let alone in the students' world beyond. We have no clue what it will look like. But for PCCS, we really have to remain committed to preparing our students for jobs and futures that just don't currently exist. And in doing so, we really have to collectively embrace this innovative spirit and practices that provide our students with all of these skills that will be necessary for them to be college-ready, career-ready, and again, just life-ready for the future. We all know, and you've heard me say multiple times, that thriving public schools are the heart of any strong community. And one of the most important roles that we play in public education is to support the advancement of our local and global community by investing in the development of our precious young people, our young learners. And so we are really taking ownership of that goal, and it is something that energizes us every day. So I would like to now invite back Ms. Gaynell Lyman. Once again, Ms. Lyman is one of our partners that's been on this journey with us. She's with ALP, that's Advanced Learning Partnerships. And she's going to answer in more detail the valuable question of what is the learner profile? Ms. Lyman?
Thank you, Dr. Merritt, and good evening. High-performing school districts across the country recognize that it is important for learners to experience rigorous academic opportunities in order to be prepared for college and career. Premier school districts, on the other hand, like Plymouth Canton Community Schools, appreciate that it is essential to combine that academic preparation with skills and characteristics to position learners to be active and contributing citizens in a global society. A learner profile identifies and describes the knowledge, skills, and characteristics that a community values. At Plymouth Canton Community Schools, we believe all learners must be equipped for success as collaborators, critical thinkers, communicators, innovators, global and ethical citizens, and goal-directed resilient learners. For our community, the learner profile is more than just a document full of buzzwords. It reflects our community's commitment to developing life-ready learners. The Plymouth Canton learner profile has been developed for the PCCS community, by the PCCS community, and embodies the skills and characteristics that our community collaboratively determined are vital for our students to build throughout their learning journey. The process requires inclusion of diverse community stakeholders to craft a language representing that shared vision for life readiness. The groups involved in our process represent members of the core team, the teaching and learning team, middle and high school students, parents, school administrators, the Plymouth Canton Community School Board of Education, and local alumni. The process employed evidence-based practices informed by other districts who are leading this work. To this point, that process has included visioning sessions that allow us to capture community-specific priorities in language. That was followed by an iterative design process that included a series of feedback cycles with these very stakeholder groups that resulted in refined language and deeper understanding of the core mission. From there, students helped us unpack what these skills and characteristics mean from the learner perspective to develop I-can statements. And now, progressions that describe these characteristics at increasing levels of sophistication are under development. Because our commitment extends beyond words on the page, the next phase in the process is essential to bring the profile to life. Beth Rail will describe current steps employed to translate language into practice for learners, facilitators, leaders, and families.
Thank you, Gaynell. And as we transition to looking to the future of the learner profile, our next steps, as we foreshadow ahead, are the development of the progressions to do this work. In other words, what does this look like, feel like, and sound like in our classrooms, on our practice fields, in our clubs and organizations, and across our community? As we look at the progressions, what we're looking at is how do we move the language of the learner profile into practice? How do we move this into actualization into our programming? As we look at our collaborative model, if you want to go to the next one, Nick, we look at how these progressions work. This is an example of the innovator. This is the initial early draft. So you're seeing the first early draft of this work. But you ask questions like, if we say that collaboration is important to us, how do we know what that looks like in a classroom? How do we build the facility and the structure for young people to engage in that work? So that it doesn't look like parallel play. Young people all sitting in a group together, working on a common goal, but not working interdependently collaboratively. So as we look at the progressions document, you're going to see some things in here. Learner, our young people, but anyone in our organization can be a learner at any time. So what does it look like when we're emerging in all of these skill sets? What does it look like when we get to practicing and then to mastery, which is beyond practicing? We're looking for the practicing level. As we look at these things, then we ask ourselves, what does that look like in the classroom? If I walk into a classroom and I see young people collaborating, what will I envision? What will I hear? What will I hear them saying to each other? How will I hear them engaging to each other? And what will I feel? What will the culture of that room be? Our leaders, our guides, our guides are our educators. What are our educators doing to support our young people with these skills? What are our leaders doing to create the environment for this to happen? And unlike any other district in the U.S. that we know of right now, our next level that we're layering on top of this is what are our parents and families doing to help support us as well in this work? They are in this journey with us. We are a community of learners together. What is all of our role in this work? And how do we collaboratively do this together to ensure that our students are college, career, and life-ready? And with that, I'm going to send it over to Mr. Brandon, who's going to share what we're doing right now.
Thank you for that, Ms. Rail. And as Ms. Rail said, we're all in this together in terms of sharing the good news about the learner profile. We're building awareness not just in our educators, but also in our students, our families, and our communities. A promotional campaign is underway. It's a five-week campaign. But I don't want anyone to think of this campaign as a start with a stop. The learner profile will be much like the dynamic plan, much like our social media work that we're doing. It will just be the way we do business. It's not something where a campaign will end and the messaging will stop. We will incorporate it in virtually all of our messaging moving forward. We've started that with the learner profile website, a unique website that shows the six characteristics and skills. We also included it in the LPTN3 podcast on November 16th. And we have scheduled multimedia presentations, including two 881 shows, one as part of Community Focus, and the other where the learner profile will be featured on an episode of Moments with Merritt with Dr. Merritt. We'll be launching a social media campaign that we're very excited about. It's going to be called Six Days with the Six Characteristics of the Learner Profile. We're going to utilize our social media outlets to do really two things that the dynamic plan cites. One is student voice. For each day that we show one of the characteristics of the dynamic plan or of the learner profile, we will be joined by a video clip from one of our students talking about how that particular characteristic will impact the student experience in PCCS. We also want to create two-way communication about the learner profile by utilizing our social media outlets to attract engagements with the community, should they want to provide any feedback or questions about the learner profile during this very exciting campaign. It will all culminate in learner profile videos that will live on our YouTube channel to once again bring this work to life for our entire school community. Some examples of the learner profile website are here. It is linked in the presentation. And we do ask that everyone take a visit to it to learn more about the six characteristics of the PCCS learner profile. And at this time, we'll take any questions or feedback from the Board of Education.
Thank you for that presentation. I'll start with questions to my right.
I'm just super excited to see this come forward. I love the collaborative work that went into creating this. And I think this is a great step that we're doing in continuing our work on innovation and helping to support our students. So we'll need some more time to digest this because it's a lot of information on the slides in particular, but I love the things I'm seeing so far.
Thanks for the update. I was just looking at the last time we got an update for the learner profile. I believe it was last fall. And, you know, great work in terms of where you are today in capturing the learner profile. My question is, what are your next steps beyond the campaign to market this information?
That's okay. I can speak to the progressions. And we've been working with Advanced Learning Partnerships over the last few months to get a foundational structure for the progressions done so that we can get it out for feedback from various groups. So we're hopeful that the Student Voice in Action Group will give us some feedback, as well as looking at beta testing in different classrooms, getting feedback from teachers, from administrators. And then, just like we did with the learner profile, which went through six iterations before it was fully done, we'll do the same with the progressions document. And then we'll start to build assets to do professional learning around it with our staff. We'll soft-launch it later this year over the summer and then start to embed it in. I want to make it very clear, this is not an evaluatory tool. This is a conversational and collaboration tool about how to embed these skills and dispositions into the work that we do with young people. It is not an add-on. It's not something new. It's about, okay, as we're doing our work, as we're engaging in our rigorous curriculum, where are these skill sets showing up? And some of them show up more readily in some areas and some in others. But also, it's an awareness of self for our young people and our adults in how are we focusing on these skills as we're doing the rest of our work? Not something new, but something that we do all the time. But now naming those skills and working on honing those skills. So I'll kick it over to Mr. Brandon for anything additional he wants to talk about in marketing and communication.
I think in terms of community engagement is what I mentioned. You know, it's all outlets, all the time, and making it part of our work, not just this campaign that we do for a few weeks. Campaign's important because it's our initial connection with the community. But our plan is similar to the dynamic plan, similar to our social media campaign that we started last year. Just making it part of the way we do business, and that means incorporating it in virtually everything that we share out with the community.
Great. I'm glad to hear that it's not an add-on for what staff already do, which is a lot of work. And so my follow-up question to that is, first of all, are staff involved? And two, if not, are you piloting it with certain staff? And then that'll get, you'll get feedback with that and then come up with the next iteration?
Yes. Once the first draft is honed a bit of the progressions, you know, we'll take some volunteers to pilot with us and slow-roll it out as we look to the future because we want to get it right. We don't want to get it fast. We want to get it right so that longitudinally, this becomes part of what we do with the framework of our work here at PCCS.
And will staff have dedicated time for this? Again, not adding more to their plate?
Yes.
Okay. Yeah, great. Thank you.
My question is, so this is really great. It reminds me of a perfect customer profile, right? And often, there's multiple parts of the perfect customer profile in business. The next part is to identify the journey of that perfect customer. Once you identify where you want them to ultimately be, and then identify barriers for them that could trip them up on that journey to kind of the end goal. Is that a part of this process? Is there an official process that thinks through the journey and barriers potentially for our students?
Yep. And I see that Gaynell's back with us. One of the things we're doing is we're working with our collaborative partners across the nation who've been down this journey. For example, Henrico County Public Schools in Virginia is probably the longest-standing partner that I'm aware of. And Gaynell, you can correct me if I'm wrong here. They've been on this journey for about 10 years. They were one of the national leaders in this work. And they have embedded it into the fabric of their organization. But they've also been collaborating with us and as well as other folks through Advanced Learning Partnerships and our national partners to help us know what are those barriers that we're going to hit so that as we're trailblazing, we're not necessarily stepping on the same landmines that others have in our stead. So what are those things that we can unravel to make sure that all of our students have access to everything necessary? That work encompasses and intertwines with everything that we do as a teaching and learning team, everything that we do across the district when we're looking at data. Do we have unintentional barriers to programming for our students? If we say that we want our students to be innovative, what tools are we putting in our hands to do that? Are we using the tools that people are using in industry and business? How are we partnering with our community partners to get students out and into those organizations sooner? All of that work is all intertwined in this. It's what we already do every day, but now it's also considering the lens of longitudinally. Five to 10 years when our students leave us, what skills and dispositions do they need to be successful beyond us?
Yeah, I could definitely see how it's intertwined. I mean, the work that the district's doing in SEL, and then also Equity. You know, obviously, those are natural barriers, right, for students on that journey. So I'm glad to hear that. That's all connected. Member Brooks?
I like it. It's a great program. What I like is the six days of PCCS learning here, all the collaboration and goals and critical thinking and communication, I feel is really important. We also need to have our students know things. So if they're asked in the future out in doing this collaboration or whatever, they won't shrug their shoulders and say, you know, I don't know that. I know how to collaborate, but I don't know things. So I believe this is a really good program for our students.
All right. Member McCoy?
I'm really excited to see this. It's a lot of work, and thank you so much for all the work you've done on this. I really like the components that the students are so involved in. I really like the components that the students are so involved in making this happen because really they're the ones we're here for. So if we want to say we're student-centered, we need to be student-centered and have them do what do they need in the future?
I think it's really important to highlight the fact that all of the ICANN statements that you see in our environment, online, on our website, those were all developed by our students. So our students, staff helped create the framework, students gave input into it, but students created every one of those ICANN statements. That's very unique to this work that's been done in other places across the nation. We are committed to student voice and input into our process. Not every district across the nation has taken those steps, but we are committed to making sure that we have our students along the journey with us because it is their future that we're talking about.
And then will this be like a living document, like our Dynamic Plan, where as things change, it's updated for what the students would need?
The answer is yes.
Fantastic. So excited about it.
Sean, I did have one other thing. So I very much see with Gainell and the work that Advanced Learning Partners is doing, how they've impacted this process. When I was looking at the website link, I saw Dell Technologies was also involved in this. Can you give me some information, give us some information on how they're participating in this process? Because they're a name that I would not have associated with this kind of work.
And Gainell, I'll take this what happened as well because I know that your audio's been a little... So Dell Technologies is one of our major partners in the work of the implementation of technology that we put into our district. Through that partnership, Advanced Learning Partnerships is, I believe, still the only professional learning organization that Dell Technologies works with. So when we implement Dell Technologies into our classrooms, we get professional learning credits, we partner with organizations chosen by Dell, or in this case, Advanced Learning Partnerships, and then they customize the professional learning for us. So we look at what is, what are our customized needs for professional learning, and then we engage with partners like Advanced Learning Partnerships. But Dell Technologies has been one of our collaborative partners in envisioning things like a blueprint for a transformed school that's working, that's being worked on in the national environment right now. So even though we think about Dell and we think about our computers and our tablets and things like that, they're one of the cutting-edge organizations out there looking at what does the future look like for our young people, not just in technology, but in education and in the future of work. So as we, you know, that's that connection there. And Gainell, tell me if I missed anything on that.
Perfect, Beth. I wouldn't have said it any better myself.
Okay. Great. Thank you, Brooks.
Perfect. Any other questions?
Thank you.
All right. Thank you for the presentation. All right, on to financing operation with Ms. Piaz bringing forth a couple resolutions.
Yeah, so this evening we have our financial advisor, Paul Stoddard, from PFM, and our bond counsel, Alan Zuma, from Miller-Kinfield. We're here with a first read of the resolution of Series Two bond issue. As you know, in March 10th of 2020, the electorate of the Plymouth Canton Community Schools approved a $225 million bond issue. At that time, we issued Series One, and now we're into Series Two. So time marches on, and we're already looking at planning for 2023 and beyond. So this authorizing resolution is a competitive process, which was discussed at the FNO last Thursday, and I'll let, because I wasn't there, I'll let Member Kehoe chime in as well. But both Paul and Alan are here to answer any questions you might have on the resolution, the attachment exhibits, or what our cash flow and other questions or other items you might have. Member Kehoe?
Yes, I just, we had a good discussion of this at the FNO meeting. The basic premise of this is that we have done this 10-year bond process with multiple series of when we issue these things, and we need to time the issuance of these, of those different series to make sure that we have the funds that we need to support the programs because we can't necessarily do 10 years' worth of construction in one year. But we also have requirements that we have to spend, I believe it's 85% of the funds within three years of issuance. So we can't get all the money upfront and then not spend it. So we have to time that appropriately as part of the process while also trying to maintain the millage rate that we have associated with this bond program for the community. So this has been very well thought out in the work that we've done as part of the work with... PFM? With PFM, sorry. With PFM as part of this process. They've got the schedules and all the other things that are part of it. We, again, did talk about it extensively in FNO, but we certainly can answer any questions if you guys have.
And the one thing I might add is this will maintain our debt millage at 4.0 mils, so it won't be an increase at all. It'll maintain it at four.
Fantastic. All right, we'll start to the right. Don't have any questions.
No questions.
No questions.
I don't have any questions. I just wanted to say thank you for all this hard work. And again, thank the community for passing this bond, which is allowing us to do all those upgrades on the schools when you go buy them, which is great. And thank Ms. Piaz and her whole team. I'm not sure people understand how much work went into structuring the bond program so that we could get the most out of not having to raise a millage rate. So, yeah, that was a lot of work, and it allows us to really maximize our bond dollars. And I know that I appreciate it as a community member and a board member, so thank you.
Fantastic.
Ms. McCoy did remind me of one thing. There's some great presentations that are on the school district's website. Every week they update the progress that we have in our various bond programs. But one of the things that was also mentioned that came up through your other committees is we're going to take that show on the road. So you'll see the school board and some of our committees going out, sharing with the community in the clubs and the other groups that exist throughout the process, some of the great work that's happened with this bond because we really want to express our thanks and gratitude for the support that the community has shown us.
Very exciting. All right.
And what would that website be?
The main website?
Bond Tuesdays.
If you search 2020 Bond, you'll see the official 2020 Bond Tuesdays website, and follow us on Facebook, Twitter, and Instagram to see them every Tuesday.
Perfect. All right, next up, action item 231124, consider approval of resolution for the purchase of a John Deere snow plow. First and final reading.
We discussed this at the FNO earlier in November. I believe it was November 4th, if I'm not mistaken. And then this is, as you know, we have a lot of trucks and a lot of ginormous vehicles, but now we're moving towards smaller, more flexible vehicles. This is a John Deere Gator vehicle with a snow plow and a salt spreader. It's going to be more efficient, more effective to plow the park, especially the sidewalks, because it is exactly the same width as the sidewalks, so we're not going to be ripping up grass and other things, and have an exterior that will maintain itself a little bit better. So I'm excited for the opportunity. It's cheaper than buying a truck. It's available, and we're asking for a first and final because there's one available, and they're putting it aside if we can get this purchase order out to them before November the 30th. So I appreciate your consideration of this resolution tonight. Thank you.
And the administration also looked for other sourcing options, things that might be more economical as part of this. This is one that really is hitting the sweet spots. Availability of the equipment, economical as part of the purchase, reduce weight on our paths so we're not breaking up our concrete, which we've seen a lot of struggles with that, not scraping up the grass. So it's really, we think, is a good thing that we talked about extensively in FNO.
Agreed. Are there any questions?
I think we have to do a motion first.
Okay. Is there a motion?
Mr. President, I move that we consider approval of resolution for the purchase of a John Deere snow plow slash Gator. First and final reading, action item 231124.
All right, Member Brooks moved. Is there a second?
Second.
All right, Member Kehoe seconded. Any questions? All right, all in favor say yes?
Yes.
Yes.
Any opposed, say no. All right, motion carries 5-0. All right, next up is Human Resources with Dr. Lilly.
I have the privilege this evening to introduce to you all, again, many of you have met Mrs. Mandolin Graham before. Mrs. Graham is a research coordinator at the University of Michigan and is a licensed clinical professional counselor with a wealth of experience. Mrs. Graham earned her Bachelor of Arts degree from Clark Atlanta University, Master's of Arts in Clinical Psychology with a counseling specialization in trauma concentration from the Chicago School of Professional Psychology, and is currently completing her PhD from the Chicago School of Psychology with a focus on international psychology and trauma. In addition to her current role, Mrs. Graham is a therapist with Talkspace, which provides therapeutic counseling services to clients internationally via an online platform. Mrs. Graham has also worked as a guidance counselor, family trauma therapist, and a development specialist, and is the founder of Make-Away Psychology-based Services. As we in the district continue to work to ensure culturally responsive learning environments where all students and staff are respected, seen, valued, and heard, we continue to do so in deepening the work with intentional work as our team. In March of 2022, all building administrators in Plymouth Canton Community Schools participated in a professional learning facilitated by Mrs. Graham on identifying and addressing racial trauma in the K-12 school system. Additionally, Mrs. Graham has facilitated two family academy sessions with the Office of Student and Family Engagement in September, with one session on how to navigate grief, grief, excuse me, with your child, and a session discussing racial trauma. We will continue to work with Mrs. Graham as we continue to do the intentional work of supporting all of our students and staff in Plymouth Canton Community Schools. So at this time, I would like to introduce to you all to do a high-level presentation on racial trauma and the impact on students and staff, Mrs. Mandolin Graham. Thank you.
Hi, everyone. I am nowhere near as tall. Thank you all for having me once again. As Dr. Lilly shared, I'll be doing a high-level presentation on a really complex topic, but thank you all for continuing to do this work within the district. I really admire your commitment beyond just one chat. So in a typical presentation, the topics that we cover, we talk about defining trauma itself so that we can lay the groundwork to understanding how does that branch out into specific types of trauma, in this case, racial trauma. We also talk about why do we even need to acknowledge this? Why is this important? Why do we need to dive into this? We talk about how children are impacted. What is the developmental impact? As you all know, you are a K-12 district, so, and that varies across the lifespan of a child. How do we support? We won't be talking about all these things tonight, but I did want to just share the types of topics that we shared during the community presentations, as well as engaging with the staff. So just a few tidbits. I would be remiss if I didn't give a high-level overview of what is trauma. Some things to know about trauma that I think are really important is to first understand how trauma happens. It is about the perception of an experience. It is something that is experienced that brings about such intense fear or concern for one's livelihood or the livelihood of someone you care deeply about or care deeply for that occurs to you. It does not actually have to be life-threatening, nor is it up to someone else to decide if that experience is a trauma. It is about how that person has experienced it. So therefore, what is a trauma? It can be literally anything. It can be any experience, especially for a child, because if we think about a child's perception of their world and what may seem dangerous or life-threatening, that umbrella is so much bigger than us as adults who have a better understanding, hopefully, of the world and what actually has an impact on our well-being. A child's entire life is managed, hopefully, by someone else, and so therefore their risk of exposure to trauma is that much higher. Trauma can occur at any point. We have, there is research that shows that even infants who have been in households that have, for instance, domestic violence going on, can have trauma reactions within their brain patterns, similar to a child who was, say, five years old. So their reactions to things like loud noises, intense conversations, even if it isn't necessarily an argument. I don't know about you all, but Thanksgiving's come up, there might be some heated football debates coming up, and it could be hard for some children to handle that type of intensity if they don't have a gauge for it, right? So it can really be experienced at any time, and the earlier a child experiences trauma, the more likely they are to continue experiencing trauma throughout their childhood, partly because that threshold for understanding what is dangerous is lower. Things feel a lot more dangerous for them. So what is racial trauma? So it is, racial trauma is a fairly new branch in terms of trauma work. It is one that we are trying to solidify and really gain some traction in regards to research and the practical work being done, all at the same time. I am glad, but it is, we're moving fast-paced, and we're trying to make sure that, as researchers, that we are moving with the times, and specifically because the whole world just experienced a collective trauma. And so one of the reasons why racial trauma has really been pushed to the forefront, even at the APA, American Psychological Association Convention this year in Minnesota, it was really pushed to the forefront because as children began to return to school, it was really highlighted the different levels of trauma between different racial groups and what it was like returning to schools, depending on the level of care and understanding that staff was able to provide them based on their diverse backgrounds. So the current working definition for racial trauma is the individual or collective psychological distress of, and fear of danger that results from experiencing or witnessing discrimination, threats of harm, violence, and intimidation directed at ethno-racial minority groups. In short, it could be anything. It could be anything that, again, feels dangerous or life-threatening, but the key is that it's not just happening to you. It can be anything that feels threatening to your racial group. So anything that may happen that a child may, in this case, we're talking about children, but it can be anyone, anything that may occur that may make you feel as though part of your identity has now become a danger for you. This is especially important because it's not a part of that identity that can be hidden away. It is, you wear it literally on your sleeve, right? And so many children, there is a piece of trauma work where we talk about the idea of hopelessness being a key factor that a lot of children feel, and this can be a real contributing factor that, what am I supposed to do about being a black or brown child in a world that feels dangerous for me? What can I do about that? So some key factors to consider. It can result from many things, such as racial harassment. Again, as I list these things, please keep in mind that it doesn't have to occur to the child. It is something that they can be a witness to. Racial harassment, witnessing racial violence, or experiencing institutional racism. A recent study showed that 90% of surveyed black individuals from the age of eight to 75 had experienced at least five experiences of racial discrimination a day. Now, this didn't have to be personal. It could be through the media. It could be witnessing microaggressions in their classroom or work. It could be any incidence of racial discrimination that they were able to identify and say, hey, that something wasn't right about that, and that piqued something in me in regards to racial interactions. Five a day, that's a lot. That's a lot. It could be a billboard you're driving by. It could really be anything, and I want us to keep in mind how much access children have. So when we're talking about their ability to witness these things, we're not talking about walking outside, we're not talking about their classrooms. We're literally now talking about the whole world at any given moment. They have it at their fingertips, which is a really wonderful thing. If we harness it, great, and it's a really dangerous thing if it is not treated with care. Okay? So why do we acknowledge it? Because of the implications. There is an increased sensitivity to threat. There is increased aggression that can be harmful, both for the child and for their environment. So this work that we're beginning to do isn't just for the children. Of course, that is our focal point, but it also helps teachers to be able to more confident in their job. I come from a family of educators, and I've said, I think, on every training and community event that I've been to, that I believe that teachers want to do best by their students. Do they always have the tools in the ever-changing world? No, and that's okay. That's why we want to continue to give them tools to really meet the needs. And even if they don't meet the needs to understand for themselves, how can I advocate for my students if I need to? Because we can't expect teachers to be everything, even though they are everything. They can't always be a doctor and have the band-aids and be the therapist and teach all at the same time. It's a lot of weight, but having the knowledge can be really helpful. We can see a narrowing sense of time and future in children, which has a whole list of things that can occur that we don't have time to get into tonight. And then we also have individual versus community experiences. So there are individual impacts as well as community. So there are individual impacts as well as community impacts, regardless of racial background. And lastly, I just want to highlight tonight some of those developmental stage markers that we want to talk about. So one of the areas that we focus on in talking about racial trauma with elementary students is that they're starting to learn that they're different. This is particularly highlighted currently because many of the children entering kindergarten and preschool came from pandemic at home. And so this really made, for many of them, this is their first journey into a space where they are interacting with individuals who are different than them on a higher level than we've ever seen in recent years. Some research even says, like, since the baby boomer age, where there were many more stay-at-home parents and things like that, many more people are returning to a space where we have two parents outside of the home working, and children have a space to go back to now, right? And so it is important to treat that with care so that as they are learning they are different, there's a positive connotation with that. We see that those individual and community impacts don't start in middle school. They start the minute they walk into these spaces, right? In middle school, we're hopefully starting to learn some real-world conflict resolution. This is also the time where children are really starting to play around, I'll say, with insults. They are starting to play around with arguments and things like that, and some of it is a learning curve about what language do we allow, what language do we not allow? But while we're having those conversations, we also have to have conversations about the lasting impact, and not just you don't use these words, but why don't you use these words? Do you really understand how you're impacting your classmates when we use these words? Or when we treat someone's identity as a joke? It's all fun and games until it's our identity being put, being put in front of the comedic mic, right? And in high school, we're looking at students who are starting to be citizens of the world. The hope is that we are sending children out into the world, you know, we're talking about them preparing for careers we haven't seen. Hopefully, they can prepare for diverse conversations that they've never had, right? And that doesn't mean that they have to know every single diverse group in the world, but we want children to be able to have an understanding of themselves so that conversations that should be a learning tool don't feel dangerous because we are afraid, because I don't want to say the wrong thing. It happens. We say the wrong thing sometimes, but how do we understand our intentions in a way that allows us to continue having these conversations in a safe way and grow and respect the emotional labor of those who come from diverse backgrounds, who are also coming to these conversations and sharing their experiences? So the hope is that Plymouth Canton Community School children can go out into the world and really be a voice for understanding and empathy and diversity. That is my high-level overview of the night, and I thank you all again so much for having me.
Fantastic. Thank you. Questions on the left with the member McQuinn.
So, thank you. This is a lot.
Yes, always is.
This is really a lot. I'm not sure I have questions right now. I have to digest some of this because we just got this presentation. So, but thank you for all this work that you're doing. I know this is a lot, a lot to do, but I'm glad to see that the district is making strides towards getting it done.
Yeah, and I will say that though it's a lot to do, is a work that is as long as the lifespan is. It makes an amazing difference just to feel like you are recognized, that part of your journey is not being completely ignored. Studies show us that there is a significant amount of improvement that comes from acknowledgement, you know? That doesn't mean we want to stop there, but it creates a significant amount of change to know that, oh, this is something that people, I don't just have to carry this. This isn't just my weight to carry in this, in this school environment.
Fantastic. Number Brooks.
I, I think it's a great program. I don't have any questions.
Secretary Sado.
Yeah, thank you for this really heavy lift that you did in like 10 minutes.
Eight to 10 minutes.
It was, I mean, jam-packed. So I have a couple of questions. One is, you mentioned a lot of research as you were talking. Would it be possible for you to share that research with us and hopefully with the community? That if we could just tag resources, some research to the agenda so that it is available to us and the community that is watching? It is such an important topic that I want people to be able to dive deeper into this, knowing that we have very limited time. And the other piece that comes to my mind is, you know, some of the things that you talked about, the multiple amounts of trauma that people of color experience, and, you know, that layers, and so you are now going into the complex traumatic events, which is a whole different level of resolving those events. So what is the, what's the support structure here at Plymouth Canton that we hope to get to in terms of making sure that we are prepared to talk to students or help students and staff with this topic?
So we continue to partner with different departments. So again, if we think about just the tier one in the classrooms with teachers who are the first level, you know, of interaction with students, first and foremost, bringing that awareness. So constantly having the professional learning and having those conversations as it pertains to exactly just trauma and mental health. As you know, in all of our classrooms, we center a lot of our conversations on the socio-emotional, learning and castle perspectives, and so wanting to ensure that there is a holistic approach in the conversation. So one of the things that we continue to lift in our professional learning opportunities with our principals and other administrators is just, again, how does the intersectionality of trauma show up, particularly for black and brown students? So, for example, one of the things that we talk about, of course, now, you know, post-pandemic, if that's such a thing, is that for black and brown students, we know that around 60 to 70% of black and brown students in this country have lost either a primary or secondary caregiver as a result of the pandemic. So when you think about that and students are coming into the classroom, it may manifest in different ways. So how does that show up? What is the data looking like? So being very specific and detailed in the classroom around what is the data saying? We've been very fortunate in our panorama data to be able to specifically look at students and see where are the critical indicators? What are the critical indicators? Is it grades, academics? Is it social-emotional? How are the students feeling about themselves? So being able to look at that from that capacity. That's, so the first layer, again, is always tier one with our teachers. When we talk about those tier-two supports, we've been very fortunate this year, as you all know, thank you very much, around the additional counselors, behavior support specialists, Dean, success specialists, so on and so forth, around just, again, how are we supporting students that, students and families? Because I think that, you know, as Mrs. Graham shared, it's not just indicative of what's happening at school. So being very aware of what's happening at home, that may show up at school, how do we layer on the supports for families? And first and foremost, you have to just have an awareness. The unfortunate reality is sometimes if it's not happening to you, people don't believe that it's happening. And so, again, having the conversations, giving the professional learning, and then giving the supports, sometimes it is very overwhelming, as we know, secondary trauma is real. So continuing to do that work, and then, again, Office of Student and Family Engagement, just multiple, multiple ways of just showing and bringing awareness to what's happening, giving the supports. If we're unable to, and we've had to address that because of so much that's going on, what are those third-party resources and supports that we can contract out to if we're unable to support in that capacity? So again, professional, ongoing professional learning, not shying away from the conversation. I think that we know that, particularly when you're talking about race, racism, racial trauma, it's not an easy conversation, particularly because of fear that people are going to get it wrong, per se, but being very intentional and just continuing that work. So that's what we're doing. I don't know if that addressed your question.
It did.
Can I, can I just jump in and add, because Dr. Lily is selling herself short a little bit? You asked about staff as well, and so Dr. Lily has done a multitude of things to make sure that we're addressing this with staff. So she started the building equity teams. Again, I understand they were here before, and she has Katie. We're looking to get two other individuals hired for those coordinator positions that you approved, or is that the right title? DEI Coordinator?
K-12 Climate and Cultural Specialist.
Okay. To get more, so that she can do more of jumping in and kind of, you know, getting in with staff. She is engaging our leaders at every single leaders' meeting with normally what I think is some courageous conversation that we're having around race, around diversity, and she's doing a lot of learning. I would, I would have to say that, just looking at definitions, what does this really mean? Do we all believe diversity has the same definition? Are we working from just, you know, a standard definition that we can all kind of grow from and learn from there? So our administrators have been taking some of the things that she's doing with them in the leaders' meeting, and we've heard very positive feedback. They're very engaged when she's presenting, and they're taking it back to their buildings and kind of doing those same kinds of activities, talking about microaggressions and all different things. So I just wanted to add that I think you're selling yourself a little bit short. There's a lot going on in the staffing side as well.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thanks, thanks for making sure that she gets credit for this work, because I know she likes to hide behind all of this important work, and I want to applaud the district.
It's called secondary trauma. I don't want anybody.
So I want to applaud the staff in the district in taking on this really important work. We know that trauma, mental health, and social-emotional learning is so important right now for our kids and staff and families. Thank you.
And so I want to echo everything that the, my other board members have shared. I know that this got shared with us in a special workshop at one point, and I really appreciate us bringing back Ms. Graham to share this information, do the showing, and giving awareness to this process, because I think it's really important for us to share to the community, to our district, to everybody that we're doing, that this is something that's important and it's intentional. And I appreciate all the great work that's happening there. I think that there's more work that we need to do probably from a communications and marketing perspective to make sure that our families know about this work and that this is an important aspect of the things that are happening. And I see that that's occurring in our materials and everything else, but it's, this intentionality on this process is the thing I want to commend you for and for, and continuing to do this work. So thank you.
Thank you.
Yeah, I'll just circle that with the intentionality, you know, for so long, not, not just in the district, but just in general, we tended to downplay race-based drama as, oh, you know, kids just being kids, or, you know, something of that nature, without really understanding the full effect that it has on their journey, that like, you know, what I was hinting at earlier, on their journey, they can't get to, you know, the end goal when they have this kind of trauma that's happening. So I appreciate the intentionality. But you did present to the community as a whole, correct, at one point?
Yes. We did a presentation to, one morning or one evening presentation, I'm sorry. One morning and one evening presentation through the Office of, please help me if I don't get it right, Community Student and Family Engagement. And they were really well-received. The attendees were highly engaged. They seemed really grateful for the presentation. Mental health has so many branches, and so, you know, one does not outshine the other, and so I think that was shown through those presentations, because we had just as much people show up for the grief presentation as we did for the racial trauma presentation. We are all, none of us are living in a bubble, so we are all experiencing all types of trauma. How we can handle it varies, but those community presentations were well-attended and well-engaged as well.
Did we capture any data from there as far as the evaluation from the attendees?
Yes, we have, the people who attend all of our Family Academy sessions have an opportunity to complete a survey, so yes, we do have that.
Great. Perhaps we could just see it in board notes. I would love to see the, the feedback from the, from the community.
I will make sure that happens. Thank you.
Fantastic. Are there any other questions?
Thank you.
All right, thank you so much. Fantastic. Thank you. All right, teaching and learning with Beth Ray.
And I'm sure that when everyone saw the agenda, they went, oh, no, six new course proposals. We're going to be here all night, but we're not. So these, go through the new course proposals and the resolutions for course revisions. I'll invite Dr. Brady to the podium in case there are questions that also need to be asked by her, but I'm going to give a high-level overview of each of these because they were deeply vetted in SPA over the last two months. So literally, I'll do high-level, we'll ask questions for each one, we'll answer anything that you need, and then we'll go on to the second one. But I do want to anchor us into three strategic objectives that these are directly attached to and impact among all of them, but primarily these three. Strategic Goal A, PCCS will increase student achievement for all students and close achievement gaps. We're going to talk about that through the level of engagement. Engagement in courses breeds increased academic achievement. When I'm engaged and I'm excited about what I'm learning, I'm more likely to work harder at it. Goal D, PCCS will incorporate student voice and input into the educational experience, and we'll, we'll highlight some areas specifically. And then Goal E, PCCS will be recognized as a leader and innovator for student learning and growth. One thing I think maybe not everyone in our community recognizes is the complex fact that we have 77 pages of a course catalog at our high school. Looks much more like a college catalog than it does a high school catalog. In many districts, for example, if you have an English class in 11th grade, you're going to have English 11. When we talk about our English offerings, we talk about a plethora of opportunities for students to help them engage deeply, although the standards in all of those courses are embedded the same, how they're presented becomes different when we look at it through the lens of student engagement. So the first proposal or resolution proposal will be for 11th and 12th grade year-long English courses. So over the past year, our Curriculum and Instruction Department has worked with the English department at PSEP and embedded some year-long, start to build some year-long English courses for 11th and 12th graders. This revision happened because of some revised things that happened in the Michigan Academic Standards that embedded reading, writing, thinking, or speaking and listening skills into all English courses. So to better do that, we aligned some year-long courses. Two things happened first. One, teachers came together and they developed some ideas and brainstormed some topics. Those brainstormed topics were then submitted to students who gave input into the ones that were most interesting to them. At PSEP, students were surveyed and over 3,000 students responded. Those 3,000 students' responses led to the development of the first four of the year-long courses, because that's how many we could get done over the summer, and kudos to the Curriculum and Instruction Team for working with the teachers over the summer to build these first four courses. African-American literature, multicultural literature, Other Worlds of Science Fiction and Fantasy, and 21st-centric global issues. Embedded into the agenda and discussed deeply at SPA are kind of the framework of those courses, and any of these changes, this is the first read, any of these changes that are made will be taking effect next fall, the fall of 2020, or 23, 24, school year and beyond. So I'm going to pause for questions on this one first, and then roll on to each one after that. So any questions you might have about first, the 11th and 12th grade year-long courses?
Any questions?
So I'm excited to hear about the process that you went through and, you know, how you're getting student input as part of this, this work. With these four new courses, are we taking other courses away?
So at this time, we're not taking things away, but I'll just highlight one of the courses to give an example. The year-long Other Worlds in Science Fiction and Fantasy, we have a science fiction course that is a half, a semester-long course, half-year, and it, one of the standards expectations is that you look at multiple genres inside. That's just an expectation from the new state. So that, that course there will be morphing into this course eventually. So for right now, there will be, there's a transition period as we continue to move forward, but some, some things might look different. The goal, as we talked to the English Language Arts Department at the high school, we talked about year-long versus semester. The goal is not to eliminate all semester courses. That's not what the discussion is, but to make sure that what we have best aligns to what the state expectations are. There are some courses that we've had in the course catalog that have not had attendance. We haven't run for quite a while, so you might eliminate those, for example. So it's a work in progress. The first step is to bring the new ones to you, because we don't, what we don't want to do is take things away when we don't have a robust choices to make sure that students have. So students will still have some choice between semester, year-long, but they will have a year-long offerings.
Fantastic. My son's actually in the science fiction course right now. He's enjoying it quite a lot.
It's a very popular course. We didn't want to lose, but we know that's very popular, but keeping it science fiction only would be problematic according to what state guidelines are.
Can we get the, or the proposal or the recommendation updated with the, how this affects the existing courses? I mean, there's obviously one, others might be pure additions, but if they're, if you're...
The others are additions.
Okay, so that all the others, so if you can just then get the proposal updated with that one being called out, the other three are additions?
The other three are additions.
Yeah, I just think it's important for the community when we bring these things forward that this is part of a, a transition or an evolution of the courses, so.
Evolution is a good way to describe it.
Great, thank you.
Yes, we can do that.
Other questions? Other questions?
I was amazed, 3,000 students bonded to this?
Yes.
That is amazing.
Well, and I'll thank the ELA teachers, because they were having students do that. We have one of the ELA teachers, she's still there, in the room. So the ELA teachers were critical in helping us get voice, getting half the students to fill out a survey is amazing, when you get 30%, as Nick knows, of any population to fill out a survey, and we had about half the student body who completed it for us. So thank you, ELA teachers, for helping us get to students.
Can we have the ELA teachers do the K-12 survey that we do?
We can try. Yeah. 50% is a wonderful return.
And also, I'm really excited to see these additional offerings for our students. It's just amazing what the students have to choose from in this district, how many offerings they actually have.
I would put our course catalog up with any high school course catalog in the country.
Yeah. One of my friends had mentioned that when she was putting her children in high school. She was like, these are all choices?
Yes. So we want to maintain choice, just to make sure we have a couple of different ways that kids can choose.
Fantastic. Perfect.
Moving on to the second one, this one is called the Adela Course Revision. So PCCS currently offers a semester-long Agile Development through English Language Arts Adela Course. So in this course, students begin with an authentic question, problem, or idea for innovation, and work through the Agile Development Process used in the engineering and computer science industries. So there have been some changes to this course, some necessary changes to this course. The addition of math concepts in the course and strengthening the Agile Development Procedures, a revision and renaming of the current Adela course was required. So the team met, iterated some different ideas for course names, and the revised course would now be called Product Launch Roadmap. This course is actually designed to take an idea for a business or a product from launch all the way through inception, including if it is something that students would have the opportunity to patent, teachers work with them to help them apply for a patent for it. So the course would be renamed Product Launch Roadmap, would remove, would move from a semester-long half-credit to a year-long full-credit course. And again, this would begin in the 22, or 23, 24, I can't even believe it's 23 coming up, it's crazy, 23, 24, school year and beyond, so next fall. So questions you might have on this one?
I don't have any questions, but, you know, again, this was talked about heavily in SPA. I do want to share that I had the opportunity to talk to some of these students while I was at RISA about four, five years ago, brought my team, and it was highly raved about in terms of what this course offers, in terms of student learn, connections to the real world, and business opportunities. So I'm glad to see it being extended and renamed according to what it's really doing for kids and their future.
And as someone who, in their day job, is involved in Agile Development and product management, I am super excited about this course. You know, this is exactly the kinds of skills that we need, and it's going to be well-received. Thank you.
I should have let you say the name, because I always say Agile, and it's agile.
Any other questions? All right.
Third course revision and course, new course look is one that we have historically had one course available for through our CTE program. And this is the development of, instead of just an educational foundations course, an educational careers pathway. One of the things we know about labor market research is we, and we feel it every day, we talk about it here at the board table quite often, is we have a significantly fewer students going into educational careers than we've ever had before, and much, much needed. So Michigan recently revised the Educational CTE Pathway, Career Tech Ed Pathway, to include multiple certifications that now cannot be completed solely in a one-year course. So due to increased need for future educators and the ability for students to earn credentials under this revised Michigan pathway, the CTE program at PCEP created an opportunity by adding two new courses, requesting to add two new courses, and revising a course just by changing the name and a slight revision of the course to create an entire educational careers pathway at PCEP. First course would be called Introduction to Educational Careers. It would be a new half-credit course geared towards 10th and 11th grade students interested in the career in education. There's information here found in the, in the memo about what this course would look like and some of the things they would do, but this would be your first foundational level. Educational Careers would be a name change for our existing Educational Foundations course. It is a one-credit course, and in that course, which is aimed at 11th graders interested in their career in education, covers those things like professionalism, cultural competencies, strategic partnerships, program development, and work-based learning. So students learn through coursework, the observation of children, and placement in a clinical setting. The third course, this would be a new course, would be Advanced Educational Careers, aimed at 12th grade students who have completed the previous two courses. This course would help students learn about instructional strategies, classroom management, lesson planning, assessment, and career-ready practices. In other words, stepping right into the role of a future educator. The final course in this pathway, this would be the final course in the pathway. Successful completion of this course would allow students to earn a Child Development Associate Credential, CDA, or a Michigan Youth Development Association credential. So again, if these courses were approved, once we do a final reading on them, they would take effect in the 23, 24, school year and beyond. So I'll pause for questions on this one.
Questions?
I know that this was probably discussed extensively, and the acronyms are probably well-known to those on the SPA. What exactly does a CDA and an MIYDA do for people? What are those, what do those things mean, and what does that help, mean to people in their, in their careers?
Yep. That is a great question, because, you know, they're early, they're early childhood developmental certifications, so, you know what, we'll have to actually get back to you for that. But it's a, it's a first-level credential for educators. I will follow up in board notes to tell you exactly what that means, because it's CTE language versus ed you speak language.
So they, the, for early childhood, for example, it gives them a credential to be able to go into, like, a childcare setting. They have a credential to be able to have work ready to go into that kind of setting, not to come in and be a classroom teacher like we have in a K-12 setting, but for an early, think, think childcare, that's what that's for.
Perfect. Is that the case with both of them, or is that just the one?
It's, yes.
Yep. But we'll get the, we'll actually get the full definition of that certification for you.
As she spelled out in the document, do you know what it means?
It is, but it's not defined necessarily. The name's there, but the, like, what, what does this do for us?
Career pathway associated with this. So that's what I think that it's important for us, not only to get into board notes, but when this comes forward for a vote next, next week, I believe, it'll be, or in a few weeks, then if we could just articulate what this means to the community, because I think that's an important part of the process.
Yep.
And I'm excited about it, I just don't fully understand it, so.
That's all good.
All right, any other questions?
Yeah, I was wondering, at what, what grade will this start at, so they could complete it?
The pathway is designed to start in the 10th grade and work through their senior year.
So every, every class that's offered with this, if you take it consecutive grade, you'll, you'll end up with what you need to do?
There could be consecutive, some could be concurrent. They will build on each other, because we'll also have some students who will be out of sequence, because they may have taken our current course, so.
Right.
Yes. Yeah, it works them through a career pathway to become a future educator.
So how does the last class meld into an educational college program that they would be taking if they weren't?
The CTE credentials would be, it would depend on what kind of a program they go into next, but that credential would follow them into a post-secondary career. So they would already be, I would say, a step ahead of students entering a bachelor's program at an edge, at a, like, let's say it's a four-year university, because generally speaking, in most education programs at four-year, four-year universities, you're not starting your kind of education courses till a year-two, so this gives them a leg up coming in with not just some coursework in that area, but also some clinical experiences in that area. So they've already worked with young students, they've worked collaboratively with teachers, so they'll move into those career pathways faster. We're also having conversations with the Michigan Department of Education around those Grow Your Own programs, and how we can fast-track people, young people into careers in education more quickly. There is some state law around the minimum age, which I believe is 19, if I'm not wrong, is that right, Dr. Mary, is that right, Chantay, do you remember? I think you have to be, the minimum age is 19, and actually, if students started a pathway at, you know, in their sophomore year, freshman year, in high school, some universities are starting to engage in schools with conversations about those first two years of college, condensing those so that students can come out faster with an education career. So there's a lot of work being done behind the scenes at the state level and around the nation about helping support our future educators. And then looking at how we do, like, a mentorship program side-by-side with a classroom, a sitting classroom teacher, a master teacher, so that we build those skill sets faster. So there's, there's a lot going on behind the scenes, much of which you'll hear more about as we bring things forward, but this one specifically just really better supports our young people, because what we don't want to have happen with any young person is they spend a whole lot of time learning about a career, they've spent a whole lot of money, I'm sure their families and parents would like to hear this too, get to the end of it and say, mm, yeah, I don't really like that, I've just spent $100,000 on a, on a four-year degree, and I don't want to go into that, I want to do something different, right? That's a hard thing to hear as a family member.
I think you can look at this, there's like, kind of, two pathways. Some people will go into the early childhood component, kind of what we were talking about with Member Kehoe earlier, and then some students, they want to just know what it means to be in K-12 education and be a teacher before they get themselves in that further down. It allows us, for students who may have a possible interest, to provide them experiences for them to better be able to make decisions.
And other than what you described before about the credit, is there, like, official accreditation for these classes to, that the colleges?
The two certifications that are in the one are credentials that they can carry with them, so.
Okay.
They're industry credentials.
Okay. Okay, thanks.
I don't really have a question, well, I did, but Patrick asked it. But this is really exciting, because there is a lot of, for families and students, there's a lot to be said for trying something in high school and deciding either I love this, or no, I can't do this.
Yep.
So thank you for offering this for our students.
And so along those lines, these courses don't require them to be done at those specific age levels. So for example, I've got some friends that they took the existing course as, I think, a senior, and became passionate about education, so they're going into that education process there. So it isn't, there's, this is a pathway, if you want to pursue the certification, where you might need to start on this, at the 10th grade or the 11th grade level, but these courses would be open to students at all ages, so that if they have a late interest in that, they still could pursue it.
That's correct. They just wouldn't complete the pathway and then get the credential.
Great. That's perfect. Thank you.
So the next one we have is Entrepreneurship Course Revision. This is the kind of converse of what we've seen with some other ones, and this course, because of some of the things that have happened with the course and some revision of the course, it's historically been a year-long offering for one-credit for students. Changes at the state level in Michigan for how CTE certification works reduced the number of Perkins Course Competencies from 12 to three segments. That's a, you know, Perkins thing, I know you're going to ask this question, and we'll have to get you some further information, but it's how the Perkins Grant funds segments of CTE programs, so thinking about, like, if it's 12 modules, now it's three. And so to do this, we actually have to reduce this course from a year-long course to a semester-long course, so it would move from a year-long, one-credit course to a semester-long half-credit course to align with the CTE expectations. Now, students would prepare, this will prepare students for an industry-recognized certification, cover all the course competencies, and anything that is in our current year-long course that's remaining would then be absorbed back into other courses in the business department. So if a student was working through the business and entrepreneurship kind of focus, they would still receive all of the other coursework. And again, it would take place in the 23, 24, school year and beyond.
Questions?
Clarification on what certifications would be possible coming out of this?
So this course itself does not provide the certification, but it's part of a pathway kind of similar to what we just talked about inside of education. This one class doesn't give a certification, it's the, when you do the pathways, there's all kinds of different pathways inside of CTE that lead to certifications.
Then I don't need anything else, I'm set. Thank you. And then perhaps, maybe, actually, just a link in board notes as to what Perkins Course Competencies means.
They change often, which is why you often see me standing here with CTE changes. They, the state changes guidelines regarding CTE often.
Yep.
I'm just curious about the premise of itself.
Yep, we will link the defining point.
Any other questions?
All right, next one. As you know, we have an award-winning culinary arts program. As part of our award-winning culinary arts program, and looking through it every year to look at revisions and things that we may be able to offer to expand our offerings, the state adopted some new standards for offering additional content within hospitality and tourism, along with funding to support these initiatives. The focus of these new standards is on management within hospitality and tourism. So leveraging these opportunities, the PCCS Culinary Arts Program will provide a year-long, one-credit hospitality and tourism management course as part of its offerings. It will focus on working on the front-of-the-house at restaurants, managing businesses, food and beverage usage, financing, human resources, and other content relative to travel and tourism industry. Curriculum that will be implemented has been reviewed by the National Restaurant Association, Michigan Restaurant and Lodging Association, and the American Hotel and Lodging Educational Institute. And no, Debbie, you can't have anybody coming out of the finance part of this, sorry. So again, this change would take place next school year and beyond, and so we'll take any questions you might have.
Questions?
This is amazing, again.
The team has done a phenomenal job looking at opportunities for students and continuing to always look to, how do we best support each and every student that we serve?
And can I add, Beth, that this, this one, the, the current course where students run the restaurant, there is a small portion of front-of-the-house, but it's not dedicated to front-of-the-house, and so from student request and student interest, and one of our teachers has worked at the state level on this course, and so that allowed us to be able to move very quickly through the, through the process of creation, because she was, Diana was part of the process of creation at the state level.
One question, with all of the, all of these careers, right, that youth have an opportunity to go deep in, once they get to high school, are we doing anything in, in middle school to expose them so that by the time they get to high school, they have some kind of understanding of what they may be interesting? You know, almost a, you know, they talk about sports sampling, but in this case, it would be career sampling, so that, to Member Kehoe's point earlier, you know, they, by the time they get there, like, I've already experienced entrepreneurship or hospitality, and that's what I want to focus on.
So I would say some of them yes, and some of them no, it depends. In our hospitality programs, we have, like, our life management courses would feed into that same strand. From the business standpoint, I don't think we have something specific at the middle school, but.
One of the things we recognize is that is an area of growth for us, when we look at those career exploration opportunities that we have. So we've been having some conversations as a, as an internal team, the middle school team specifically, to start to think about, what does that look like? How do we ensure that all students have those opportunities? Obviously, we do our EDPs, our Educational Development Plans and things, where students explore careers using tools like Zello, which is a, is an online platform that gets careers, it shows students, here are some potential careers based on your interests, but helping students do that sampling sooner is certainly in our awareness for iteration next, so stay tuned on that.
Thank you. Any other questions?
All right, the final one, sorry, did you have a question?
No.
Okay. The final one is one that I know Members Sedu kind of foreshadowed a bit, that, you know, a lot of the team is very excited about, which is a course called Understanding the World Through Mathematics. High school math teachers and the Curriculum and Instruction Department collaborated to create a semester-long half-credit math elective for 11th and 12th grade students that supports the authentic application of mathematical concepts. Purpose of the course is to help students see how math is used all around them in the real world. So they would apply concepts from previous math courses using current journal events, current events and articles from publications. Of course, would utilize journals from the Michigan E-Library, data from census bearings. Of course, would utilize journals from Michigan E-Library, data from Census Bureau, other government websites, discuss historical context and research on given topics, research, evaluate, and explore math processes involved in data. I know, some people just love these words, right? Draw and defend conclusions based on the data, write, present, speak, and debate topics discussed. And then they'll develop a final research project on a topic of interest of their choice and determine how mathematics is used in those fields. So this change would take place for 2023 and beyond, this would be a brand-new course offering for us.
I'll add that this course came to fruition from, again, one of our math teachers having conversation with students about the need for an elective that shows the real-world application and how math not, because, you know, Algebra II can be a rather esoteric kind of approach to, to talking about math. And so how, how do you help students see the application component of an Algebra II or algebra concepts and geometry concepts into the real world? And so he, Noah Salter, he, he came to the curriculum instruction department with the idea and we loved it, and, and thank you for him to reaching out to students and getting their input, so we appreciate that.
Fantastic, questions?
Super excited about this course. What are the prerequisites as part of this process?
They need to be in Algebra II concurrently because of the level of math. It can be concurrent, that's okay, but they do need to have completed Algebra, geometry, and then at least be enrolled in Algebra II to be able to handle the math concepts there.
Great, and with some of the language art components that are part of this, is this only giving math credit or is there?
It is only giving math credit, there are ELA components, but not enough that they would receive an ELA credit for that, it is a math elective.
Okay, super excited about this.
I'm super excited too.
But it certainly will enhance their, their English skills.
Absolutely, it embeds everything together, yeah.
Very exciting.
Very cross-cutting course.
Fantastic.
Thanks for the hard work and all of this for the entire team and the staff and students.
Thank you to the CTE Department and Kathy Williams and all the people who've worked.
Lots of great work happening, so thank you for all of that, and we will bring them back next one with the revisions for a final read.
Fantastic.
Thank you guys, great work. On to citizens' comments with Josh Patterson. Just as a reminder, you have three minutes.
He starts it when you start talking.
Hello, everyone. Hello, everyone. I wanted to give a quick shout-out to the PCSEP administration and staff for their very prompt response to the recent Salem fire line, for how they expedited getting students into the alternate, alternate locations, sorry, I just lost it, alternate locations to protect them from the elements in a very timely manner. Over the last several months, there's been a lot of discussion around getting more people from the community involved in the Board of Education subcommittees and encouraging general citizen attendance. I gladly, I gladly accepted that offer, and after this evening, I've now been to all the subcommittees. While I personally think that SVA is the most fun from a student perspective, I do think that the rest are really worth both students and general citizens investing their time in. I really encourage others to participate in these activities. Finally, thank you to everyone who has spent time answering my, many questions and helping me to learn so much about what you do, thank you.
Thank you, Josh. All right, action items. So consider approve our resolution to adopt PCCS 2022 Board of Education Goals, first reading. Just as a reminder, this process started many moons ago, quite a while ago, and it really started with a workshop amongst the board, and then we were able to hone these goals, which obviously reflects the dynamic plan, the feedback that we receive from the community. So this is the, the first reading, the, the goal, of course, was to bring it forward and allow some time for the community to have transparency on it. And with that, I'll turn it over to, well, any other questions or?
It might be worthwhile for us to, just to share the goals and kind of talk through them. And then I also, I, when we had our, our previous special meeting where we discussed this, one of the things that we had talked about was adding after the strategic goals, but before the Board of Education objectives, some context around what are the, the statutory requirements of, or the, the work that we do as part of a, a school board member, so we could just provide some more context for these goals, because we don't want people to think these are the only objectives that we have as a Board of Education, but there's some of the specific things that we're calling out.
Correct. Mr. Brandon, can you put the goals up?
I think that was the cafeteria.
Nope, that's different.
Nope, nope, yep, there you go.
Right there.
Quick, yep. All right.
Well, so those are your?
So as a reminder, the strategic themes and the goals are the things that we've aligned on as part of the dynamic plan as for the whole district. And then the things that we've identified below that, the Board of Education objectives, there's three of them that we called out, that we thought were important for us to be working on in this, in this school year to support this process. And I guess I'll continue, much like the, much like the work that we do with the dynamic plan, we're trying to link each of these board goals back to those strategic goals that we have as a district. So the first one that we have here is around strengthening those connections between the Board of Education, the community, and, and the other community stakeholders as part of this process through a layered approach. So this is aligning to items C and D, which is increasing and sustaining the community partnerships, and as well as D, the incorporate student voice and input through the educational experience. And so the, the subtasks or the items that we have underneath that objective are areas that we can do more outreach. I alluded to some of that from a Finance and Operations Committee perspective, where we want to do conversations with the community on, on some of our bond and capital projects, as well as to educate folks on how education is funded. It is a very complicated process, and it's oftentimes people think, well, I pay my taxes and that's how education is funded, and that's not the only part of it. It's actually, it's not even a very big part of it. So we'll do some of those present, continue to do the topics around dynamic plan updates and other things, and we'll look for lots of areas that as a board, we can engage with the community to share some of the work that we're doing, as well as the work that the administration, the district is doing as a whole. And then we all, go ahead, please.
Can I just add to that? Some of, we've already started doing some of this.
Correct.
The change is we, I've been on the board four, five years, we've never really sat down as a board, outlined board goals for ourselves. And I've seen, you know, changes with board members and leadership, and we thought it was really important that we start holding ourselves accountable to this work. Like I said, we're already doing some of it, but just to put it in writing to say, we're going to prioritize these things this school year and build upon that. So I just want to highlight that this is work that's already happening, but we're calling it out in connection to the dynamic plan. And for those of you that have attended our community forums, you'll see the strategic themes and the goals that we present at every community forum, so those should start being repetition for you all if you're coming to those forums.
And so along the same lines, and from a perspective of accountability, we want to add those tracking measure mechanisms. So much like Ms. Fertainian Gibbs does in the student, I'm sorry, in the, I'm drawing a blank, and the, the work that she does, the, the different committee, or different presentations that she does, she has surveys and other input mechanisms to get feedback from the community on how well those programs are working. We want to do the same thing, and we want to try multiple modes, so we don't want to do just workshops, we want to have perhaps the, the work that we do with newsletters, we want to be able to go to community groups, we want to do other mechanisms and modes that we can reach out to people as part of the process. And that newsletter is one of the ways that we're, we're looking at a new mechanism to be able to expose what's happening. And then, of course, the Student Voice in Action Committee is, is one of the things, and we've more than met that goal of twenty-five members.
Yeah, absolutely, yeah, it, you know, this whole process really helps to provide the board with, really helped the board, helps the board to become more efficient because we streamline our focus. And when you look at the amount of work that this board takes on, it's, it's significant when you look at our agendas through, that, that we set throughout the year. So by doing this, it really gives us focus, and, and with that focus comes deeper impact, so. Members Sedu, would you like to go over objective number two?
Sure, I'll let you pull up my documents again, I started pulling up the newsletter. Objective number two is improve decision-making through data and analytics, which is aligned to goals A, B, and E. And specifically, we're going to be working with the superintendent to develop a dynamic plan dashboard using baseline data, and this is to be developed for the twenty-three, twenty-four school year. The other goal is to review and monitor student performance data at least twice a year, which is through standardized tests, credit attainment, graduation rates, SEL, which is through panorama, and use this data to ensure that we have an appropriate allocation of resources where the greatest need is highlighted, and align curriculum to those goals to set out in the dynamic plan. Again, this work is already happening in SPA, which is a Student Performance and Achievement Committee work, but calling it out and aligning it to the dynamic plan is important. The third goal, objective, is review and monitor student discipline data, which includes suspension, expulsions, et cetera, to identify gaps and ensure policies and allocation of resources aligned to the goals set out in the dynamic plan. Again, this work is already happening, but to be more intentional with it is why it's outlined here.
And just for those that are in the audience or in the community, as a reminder, we were thoughtfully pointed out to this by a student, that we sometimes use terms like panorama without defining what they are. Eventually, it will become as common as we have things like MYSTAR, but panorama is a new tool that the district is invested in to help aggregate and surface information that comes from a variety of different data sources throughout the district to give us kind of a three-hundred-and-sixty-degree view of students with their test scores, their social-emotional learnings, their attendance, their, all the information that we have about a student, it gives them a chance to be able to see that. So just for context, it's come up a couple of times this evening, and I think it's, we need to make sure that we continue to remind people what that means.
Thank you for that.
Yeah. Member McCoyn, could you go over objective three?
Sure, so objective three is improve Board of Education efficiency and processes. So the first one is that we're going to review all policies, administrative guidelines and forms on a four-year cycle to ensure that they're aligned, current with state law, and address emerging gaps. So currently, we kind of look at them as something comes up or if state law changes. This is just going to make sure that we are, we're, we're proactive, a little more proactive with it. There's quite a few policies, so it is a four, we originally said three, and one of our community members is like, mm, that feels really ambitious. So we did, do it to four, and just to make sure there's no gaps between our administrative guidelines, and there's some forms that we don't really use anymore, so we'll, we'll take a look and get rid of those. Then we need to develop and adhere to annual superintendent evaluation calendar. Again, part of that is we have an old policy from nineteen ninety-five that does not align to current state law or current practice, so make sure that we're getting those dates on the books and sticking to them, and then update our Board of Education manual and guidelines that was kind of put together by a former school board president and kind of then not done much with it since. So we're going to take a look at that also.
Fantastic. And Member Kehoe, just to, just to circle back, so you mentioned that we're missing something, you just wanted a component in here that communicated the overall broad, it's broad responsibilities of the board, policy, supervision of superintendent, vision, setting, those components, so that the community understands that these are the broader responsibilities of the Board of Education, but these are specific to twenty-twenty-two, twenty-twenty-three.
Exactly, exactly. So just like between the strategic goals and the first objective, they just add a small piece into there.
Great, any other comments?
And I'll be super, you know, retentive on it, there's an extra space before the "are" in review in the third Board of Objective. So on that bullet point, there's a space before the "are," so it's pushed over slightly to the right and it drives me crazy.
We will fix that, we will fix that. All right.
Looks like a half a space to me.
Leave it to Patrick, Kehoe. All right, on to superintendent, goals and objectives, and I guess if we could follow a similar format.
Okay, so in terms of, kind of to just reiterate how this process works, we have the dynamic plan that's completed, which is really our blueprint for the next, in six year now, but total of seven-year plans, cascading from that, and that's where we set the district goals, then you as Board of Education are adopting your goals and holding yourselves accountable to the work that you're expected to do, and then from there, the development of my goals. As you were, you changed the evaluation tool, which would now be following the Collins and Blaha tool, and under that tool, many components of roles and responsibilities that I'm responsible for will be evaluated under domains one through six. It gives another opportunity in domain seven, which is an optional performance goal. So as we look to that dynamic plan and looking at what are really areas in which we want to have a, a intense focus as we're looking to move the needle on achievement for our district. The four areas in which the focus of this particular year for me will be, one, student growth and achievement, two, community partnerships, family and student engagement, and how that impacts student enrollment, the student and safety, student and staff safety and well-being, and then the overall implementation of the strategic plan. In particular, there are four goals that have identified from now through the end of this evaluation cycle. The first and, and most important always is improving student growth and achievement by grade level of expected growth as measured by the NWEA and other multiple measures. And again, this connects with our strategic goal A about increasing achievement and narrowing achievement gaps. Through this, I just gave kind of an indication that aligns our work with our action plan. So as you know, when you look at our strategic plan, it's, the what is the Board of Education, and then the how is something that is guided by me and our team going forward. So these are year-long action plans. In particular, as it relates to this goal, you'll see action details specifically around this year, the full implementation of the MYKIP process, which is our new improved version of the school improvement process, really looking at the lens of the whole child. So if you're trying to get a child ready for academic success, you need to make sure that you're following all other components and supporting for behavior, for social-emotional, for physical and, and mental health, all of the above is outlined by the state. So developing, implementing that program, developing the framework, setting expectations for all to ensure that there is an alignment, work that we're doing within our curriculum and instruction, making sure that we have alignment between special education, EL, as well as our general education curriculum, looking at our annual review of aggregate and disaggregated data of achievement, and this comes in all forms, our NWEA, our SAT, our PSAT, our WIDA, and determining where the disparities are. This is addressing the closing of the achievement gaps. This year in particular, we're looking to identify root causes and then create those action plans that will eliminate those gaps as a part of this MYKIP process. As a part of that, there will be recommendations that will come forward. For example, something that you just approved and supported was our recommendation to change the elementary intervention model in terms of how we're delivering service, because we've been investing in for many, many years, but not making a, a significant impact on closing those gaps. So taking that data, determining the root cause, and then bringing forth recommendations on how we can potentially change models to actually impact change for our students. And this is something you'll see continued through the evaluation of our elementary as well as our secondary intervention practices. Moving on then to goal number two is around, again, increasing community partnerships and engagement with the lens of student enrollment. When you look at student enrollment, looking at a two, through, through two different lens, really, one is the creation of a plan that is addressing our current students and making sure that we're able to, through our opportunities, all these rich opportunities that you hear, this educational experience that really is unique, and addressing this learning, learner profile, that we're able to continue to work with our families that have chosen to educate their students through PCCS, and that is more of a retention of those students, making sure that we're continuing to market our programs and, and I'm going to say, reduce any, we're going to have decline in enrollment based on birth rate, but any families that may believe that we're not providing that educational experience here, making sure that we're able to retain our current students in our system. There's also another lens of prospective students, so this plan would be, as we know, each year we talk about twenty-two-hundred to twenty-four-hundred Plymouth Canton residents that are choosing education elsewhere, and I will always be the number one to say, I do not believe that there is a better option for our students in our community than Plymouth Canton Community Schools with our amazing teachers that you've heard about this evening, and our staff that do everything in their power to ensure that each student has what they need to be successful. option for our students in our community than Plymouth Canton Community Schools with our amazing teachers that you've heard about this evening and our staff that do everything in their power to ensure that each student has what they need to be successful." So with that, looking at a plan that will look at those students or families that have either chosen to leave PCCS or have never given us that opportunity to experience this environment. And so how are we going about marketing and highlighting and meeting with those parents to ensure that they know the opportunities that we have available for them? Some other ideas under this action plan for this year is, you've seen some work already around this comprehensive audit, looking at our partnerships, and our partnerships meaning meaningful partnerships, those that are truly enhancing the experiences for our students. That has to be something that's also mutually beneficial, so it's not just that our students are getting opportunities from these partnerships that are supporting our programs, but that the businesses can always say, again, that they're benefiting. Taking again to the learner profile as we're working to create students for jobs in the workforce and really investing in our local and global community and what work needs to be done in order to make that happen with increasing those partnerships. We're eliminating partnerships as well that may not be as beneficial or not really able to help us achieve that district goal there. Can, I'm trying to see, high level. Other opportunities that talked about here is specialized curricular and extracurricular experiences. And again, as we look through that idea of the lens of innovation and unique experiences for students, all of the things that we're talking about in terms of these courses that are going through, making that effort to increase these specialized curricular opportunities so we continue to get that feedback that we can put our course catalog up to any in the country because we're offering so much here. The successful launch of our early middle college, again, continuing to recreate opportunities or introduce new opportunities that will enhance the experience. And the final piece is based on feedback that we've heard is around our climate survey. How do we really measure that success? Is that opportunity to speak to our community, our stakeholders, about their experience? And what we've heard over time is this survey that we've been utilizing is long or may not give families or staff the opportunity to really address our issues. So really, this year would be looking at relaunching a new district climate survey that's going to be able to effectively collect more information around academics and behavior, social, emotional support in a manner that is more concise and appealing to the user and getting us that feedback that we need to support the work that we're doing for students. Finally, moving on to goal number three for this year, developing consistently implement processes and procedures to ensure student and staff safety and well-being. Of course, this has been a very trying few years across the world as we've navigated the pandemic and also the tragedies among schools that have impacted our feeling of being safe in our families as they entrust their students with us, realizing that we owe it to our families to make sure that safety and well-being of students and staff remains a number-one priority. So utilizing our action plans in this area, our addressing various needs of that student safety and well-being, physical safety, as well as feeling safe and represented in terms of our culture and climate and students coming to school, that's looking at attendance procedures, looking at our threat assessments, making sure that we have processes and procedures in place when students are not making the best choices to ensure that they are addressed, assessed, and appropriate supports are put in place. Accountability according to our K-12 handbook is administered with consistency across the district. Also, the importance of facilitating, as you heard this evening, professional learning as we look to our staff to ensure an environment that is inclusive for all. We need to make sure that we are increasing opportunities for culturally responsive practices and training to mitigate bias, eliminate racism, and promote inclusivity within all of our schools. So continuing that work will be a primary action plan underneath this goal for this year. Engaging with external partners, which is always important, and we look at even our federal funding that's available to us this year. There is grant money associated with having an external partner come in and do a security assessment. We're here, we have a very talented staff in safety and security, but having a third-party come in and review all of our buildings to see if there are further enhancements that can take place in this space. You'll see also an area in here that really taps into the dynamic plan and that goal of making sure that students have opportunities to provide their voice for input as we hear the students are best equipped to tell us what they need and support with their families in terms of having a successful environment here. So bringing students to more opportunities, for example, with the student code of conduct, attendance practices, disciplines, and just lending their voice to ideas that can strengthen us in that space. One idea that you've heard a lot about already in this is that creation and the implementation of the student and family engagement program. Again, when we look at the MYKIP process and educating the whole child, this has been such an instrumental addition to, I think, our program here in our district, providing the supports for our students and families that they need in order to fully participate in our experience. The final piece, again, is just a broader goal, never losing sight of that overall plan and making sure that I'm leading our team to implement that plan in its entirety. So that touches on all aspects of the dynamic plan and just some very specific actions around that, making sure that there is transparency, including communications with community, education, making sure even the structure of our meetings internally, as we're doing with board meetings, we have a connection to that dynamic plan so that we're keeping that fresh and not just a document on the shelf, but something that really, again, is informing our work and we're holding ourselves accountable to and measuring our progress along the way. So those then are presented as goals for the remainder of the 2223 school year.
Fantastic. Any questions, comments?
Just for the community, if you can just explain MYKIP again?
Oh, yes.
The acronym, so.
Beth.
Oh, what is it? MYKIP? I'm sorry.
Michigan Integrated Continuous Improvement Program.
And the improve, yeah. So, school improvement process. And again, I think we shared with here, it's kind of, you look at it as a wheel. And so when you're looking at students in the center and their academic success, what are the components that we also have to address? And so there are areas of physical and mental health, social, emotional, attendance.
The whole child.
The whole child, truly looking at, all of these elements must be in place in order for the students to show up ready to learn and to excel.
Thank you.
We should just put a glossary?
Yeah, we do.
Yeah.
And then they'll change it a month later.
Some of the terms we use regularly, so they're like all the time, and so people understand it, but some of these newer ones, like even me, I'd forgotten what MYKIP was.
By the time we get used to MYKIP, it'll name something else.
It's not the sips and dips anymore.
Right, right. And I see ya.
Part of the fun, part of the fun. All right. Well, thank, you know, thank you to everyone for the hard work getting us to this point. Powerful to see how everything is aligned to that dynamic plan, and I think that was our original vision, so fantastic work. Onto, tonight, I'm 231125, consider approval of the memorandum of agreement with Plymouth Canton Cafeteria Association. This will be the first and final reading.
Mr. President, I move that we consider approval of the memorandum of agreement with the Plymouth Canton Cafeteria Association, PCA, first and final reading. Action item number 23-11-25.
Second.
Okay. And will Ms. Langford be walking us through? Yep.
All right. Good evening again, everyone. So as we all know, the nation is experiencing just a shortage of employees, no matter what the field is, and school districts are no exception to that rule. So with some of the other things that we are looking into to think of creative ways to get out and get more staff, to keep people engaged in our work here and wanting to stay with job fairs and with making sure that we're keeping equity as a focus so that all feel included, signage, social media, I mean, so many ways that we're out there. We're updating our frontline system so that we will have a system that is more robust and more effective in helping us to get our job postings and stuff in other locations. So with all that being said, one of the areas, of course, that we would look at when we're looking to recruit and hire employees, we would, of course, look at the financial and making sure that we're comparable with other districts and offering bonuses and doing those things that we can do to get people to stay and people to come on board. So I'd just first like to publicly thank the unions. I see the, some of the leadership back there and working with me on these memorandum of agreements. I would like to thank Debbie Piaz because she sat through the meetings with me, gave me, gave me the numbers, and that really helped out. So the first one that I have before you this evening would be for our nutritional services team. So what we are proposing is that they receive a temporary $2 hourly rate increase that would be effective for the 2223 and 2324 school years. We are also, the second MOA that I have is a retention and new hire bonus. So that's a bonus of $500 that the employees would get twice a year, once in December and then again in June. So that is the proposal for the nutritional services area.
Okay. Open it up for questions?
I don't have any questions, but I want to thank everyone for being part of this process and, again, acknowledging the need and the urgency, looking at the short staff, and also glad to see that there was an increase with payment and bonus. So it's a way to attract and retain talent and just appreciate the staff that's working so hard on behalf of our kids.
So I would like to make sure that we are thanking, our Nutritional Services really spent a lot of time making sure our families and students were fed during the school closures. They were actually working way more to get everybody fed, went out of their way to make sure everybody was taken care of. So, thank you so much. I'm not sure the, the community is always aware of how much work goes into that.
Fantastic. Any other questions?
And just along the same lines, we know that they're understaffed and they're putting in a lot of extra time right now, and I'm hoping that this will help us to recruit and bring that staffing levels up so that they don't have to be really working quite as hard as they are right now. So.
Absolutely. All right. There's no further questions or comments? All in favor, say yes?
Yes.
Yes.
Any opposed, say no? All right. Passes five zero. Let's see here. So on to action item 231126, consider approval of memorandum of agreement with Plymouth Canton Paraprofessional Association, first and final reading.
So, excuse me.
Can I have a motion?
Mr. President, I move that we consider approval of a memorandum of agreement with the Plymouth Canton Paraprofessional Association, the PCPA, first and final reading, action item 231126.
Is there a second?
Second.
All right.
Sorry, I got ahead of myself. I was thinking of two things that I didn't say at the beginning because we're doing these separately. The one thing that I did want to add is that the reason that these came about, these particular groups, because we do have three groups we're bringing for, to you tonight, is that we were looking at where we have major openings, and that was the reason that we chose these groups. So I just wanted that to be noted as well, and then my computer just went down. All right, here we go. So with that, we are also proposing for the PC, no, here we go, sorry. Yep, I got it. When it shut down, it did it. So the Prepare Professionals Association, a temporary $2 hourly rate increase as well effective for the 2223 and 2324 school year, as well as the same retention and new hire bonus before, that mentioned before, for $500. That would be effective for the 2223 school year, paid out in December and then again in June.
Fantastic. Any questions?
No, same as before. Glad to see all the work happening and thanks to everyone that's involved. And if you're looking for a job, we are hiring. We are a great school district to be a part of and working with, so please join us.
I echo those comments, and I just want to make sure I'm clear. This is effective when, for, I know that it's clear in the memorandums of when the hiring and retention bonuses go in. When is the, the pay increase effective?
So as per the agreement, they will be effective the date that the memorandums of agreements were signed.
Okay, so the date that they were signed, not the date that we're, for example, approving them here?
Correct.
Okay, thank you.
Ms. Piaz?
That's what I was going to say. So the, yeah, the Nutritional Services workers, that is the last effective sign date is 10/24. And then the Paraprofessionals, the last sign date was 10...
November 16th, I think, or 18th.
11/16, sorry.
So with the Paris, do we have to then do retro pay and, okay, I'm sorry about that extra work. I'm glad you've got a new payroll clerk coming in forward.
He doesn't start until December the 12th, but we'll get it done.
Okay, thank you.
Any other questions?
Just a comment. Again, this is a really hard-working group of people who's, who are in classrooms and building, supporting our students.
Fantastic. All right. All in favor, say yes?
Yes. Yes.
Any opposed, say no? All right, that passes five zero. Action item 231127, consider approval of memorandum of agreement with Plymouth Canton Security Internal Union of Operating Engineers, Local 324, first and final reading.
Mr. President, I move that we consider approval of a memorandum of agreement with the Plymouth Canton Security Internal Union of Operating Engineers, Local 324, first and final reading, action item 23-11-27.
Second.
All right. Comments, questions?
Again, I want to thank the staff. I know there are job openings here as well, so please join us.
All right. Any further questions, comments? All right. All in favor, say yes?
Yes.
Yes.
Any opposed, say no? All right, motion passes five zero. All right. Thank you. Thank you. Look, at the end of the day, it's an important investment and, you know, one of the most important resources we have, which is our staff. So I'm glad that this is, we're able to make this happen. All right, next discussion item, Canton High School mascot. Sounds like there are some conversations in policy, so I'll turn it over to Member McCoy.
Yeah, so we did discuss the policy because there was, seemed to be some misalignment between the administrative guidelines and the policy. So what's going to happen is, in the administrative guidelines, it's going to be more spelled out at the very beginning, they're talking about just facilities, not a mascot. And so we discussed the idea that, per, what the guidelines are, a proposal is brought forward to Dr. Merritt, and then the board would say, "Yes, let's empower her to create a committee." And we need to be aware of the fact that, once the committee is formed, they only have 90 days to complete all of their work. And then bring the resolution forward with a recommendation. So we did, we discussed this kind of extensively, and again, why we have community members on our committees, the idea of really making sure that when a call goes out for, for community members, for a committee, that it's very specific about what kind of work this would entail. Because with a short, compressed timeline like this, it's, it's kind of a large investment of time. So not, for instance, a one meeting a month, probably one meeting a week for that period of time, and making sure people understand what that would be into. And then we also discussed having, because there are students that would go on to it, having SVA take that on as a subcommittee work, because you already have all the students, and they have a lot of reach into, I mean, because there would only be two students actually on the committee, but of course, input from multiple groups would be gathered. So we just discussed how to best, you know, reach it out to the community, and we thought probably a good idea would be to make sure we have a timeline and the specific requirements, like if, if people are going to be approving the idea of forming a committee, do that in our January meeting, which was already on our calendar, and then a, like a two-week period to get applications in, and then just agree to rigorously go through those, you know, fairly quickly to get community members and parents so that we get a wider audience and not just, like, say, the two people we know, you know, to get, to allow the community. And it does also include forums... And it does also include forums and things like that, that would have to be held with the broader community.
So just to clarify, is the recommendation that we punt on forming the committee until January?
Yes, because when we're going into, like now we have Thanksgiving break and then we're going to have another break, we're not sure we'd get very much engagement with the community at this point. It's a busy time for schools, everybody has a program, and once the committee's formed, they only have, the clock starts.
So my, my main concern with that and, you know, would love to open it up to, to the entire board, obviously, for, for conversation. You know, this came about, obviously, multiple times, student groups have come before the board and requested a mascot change. And we've punted multiple times. Oh, we, we need to develop a policy, we need to develop, right? So we've punted multiple times. Three weeks ago, a student came before us, or maybe a month ago came before us and, and asked us to actually take action, right? So my concern is that I don't see a downside of providing Dr. Merritt with the directive to go ahead and start to form the group. That gives her time between now and the end of year to at least have conversations, not that she has to activate the group now, but she can start to plan what that will look like top of the year to, to start the process. But if we're, we're going to, you know, this, to me, this would be yet another example of the Board of Education punting a request from the students. And as a reminder, is, you know, the, the goal is for the, the process to start, 90 days, full community feedback, all of that, so we're not looking to make a decision now or even in January. It's merely to provide a directive to Dr. Merritt to start the process, start the planning process, the consideration of standing up a committee.
So we really kind of did that part.
So are we giving her a direct, so are we prepared to provide a directive today?
Well, so we have to make sure that we understand what exactly the criteria is going to be, because we can't go out to the community and, and ask people to apply for a committee if we have not, if we don't have some firm idea of what we're looking for.
Isn't that the work of Dr. Merritt?
It's actually, I, your procedures are very clear, that I have the appointment of three members of the community, which would be staff only. So the board will have to have a process for choosing students, for choosing parents, and for choosing community members.
So can, can we just step back for just a second and outline the parameters of the policy that we have? Because I think that governs what we're, what we're talking about and I don't think it's clear to me, maybe the, the people in the audience here, what is the parameters of the policy?
So if we, what means...
Does the policy dictate the 90-day period? How many members are on the, the committee? Does the timing, everything, is that all dictated in the policy? If I remember correctly, the policy has some time component to it, it's only...
90 days.
No, it's, I'm sorry, it's only every other year?
It's odd-numbered years, yes.
So, and can the policy, can you, for example, form the committee now? When, when...
It doesn't clarify that.
When, when does the, the clock start ticking for odd-numbered years? So in other words...
We couldn't take formal action until 2023.
So we can't vote on it until, until 2023?
Correct.
But, for example, we could have started this committee in September and been ready to bring this thing forward on the first meeting in January, theoretically.
We could have, but that's in the past.
No, I understand, I'm just trying to understand the parameters. Is there, to, to, from President Wilson's perspective, the downside in the timing, is I am very conscious of the timing. Does the 90-day period, is that written into the policy?
Yes.
Okay. And it requires that the committee come forward with a recommendation in that period of time?
Yes.
And does it include the community meetings that occur be, within that 90 period, 90-day period? So...
We didn't want to, so one of the reasons was to make sure it was not dragged out once you get going, a year, two years, that it's a specific period of time.
Right, so towards that end, what, from, based on what Dr., I'm sorry, what Mr. Wilson said, is, could we start the committee's actions on the beginning of January? So the 90-day timer doesn't start until the first committee meeting, correct?
The 90-day timer starts once you've picked your committee.
Right, so, okay.
And so we actually talked about...
So we could provide the directive now?
Right, what we talked about in terms of what can we do now? We could start the committee process now, but we're fighting against a lot of busy time and we're doing interviews for all the other subcommittees. We've already had a call-out for community members to participate in that. So we thought, let's wait until after the holiday and send a call-out to the community to say, we are looking for four community members, two parents, and the application process would start immediately, soon as we got that out. And then within two weeks, make the determination, who are the people that are going to be a part of this committee, from the community members and the parent members. So, starting that now, number one, again, I don't know how many people are paying attention to coming here, going through an interview process, us looking at how many people are part of this, and then waiting two weeks to get to that.
So the two weeks isn't prescriptive though, correct? It's only the 90 days that's prescriptive?
No, the two weeks, but we don't want to have like, an open window of a month and a half for people to apply.
Well, I guess, why not? And I guess the point is, is channeling Ms. Chastain, can we do both and? Can we, can we...
So, so we could...
Let people know that this is coming up?
We could let people know that this was coming up, but right now, we don't have, like, the criteria, like, to make sure that it's spelled out, because people have a lot of questions when they want to be on a committee. Like for the subcommittees, we had a, a written definition of, you know, the time commitment. Like for instance, for this, the work of the committee would be done by the committee, so we're not picking a, you know, a night, we're not picking a time for them. They would have to figure that out themselves.
But we kind of have to let people know when we're soliciting the community members, what we expect that. So it, it sounds like there's some pre-work that needs to be done.
Yeah, there is pre-work.
Yeah, that's what we're going to do, between now and January.
So I guess my question is, towards Mr. Wilson's, or President Wilson's perspective, is can we do that work leading up to, for example, the next board meeting? And then at the next board meeting, announce this and let people know so that we've got a longer period of time to solicit people from the community?
I don't have time to do it, before the next board meeting. If that's the question.
Does this have to be done by the policy committee, or where is this done?
Well, I, we could do it, but who, does somebody have the time to do that?
Okay, that's my question. So, I, I don't know where that work needs to be done.
The board has to be a part of that work.
So is it, so is it the whole board or is it a subcommittee?
No, it's a subcommittee.
So is it SVA? Is that where we want this work to be done?
No, SVA is going to do the...
The student part of it.
The student part, because there's two students on the committee. So the, the SVA, because, oh, I guess he left. Because we already talked, oh, he talked, yeah, we talked about it with Josh at the meeting. He was all on board with it.
Right, so...
Not that he necessarily wants to do it, but he's on board with SVA doing it.
Right. So I guess the question then is, is that, what is the right committee to do this work? Is it one of our existing committees? Or is it a new ad hoc committee?
It's a new ad hoc committee. And that was the other thing that we discussed in the policy committee, which is, is it number 9140? Which is the Citizens Advisory Committee? So taking that wording, putting it together with the ask, what is the ask in the timeline? Asking people to be a part of this work. And Dr. Merritt is, she's aware of, she needs her staff to be a part of it.
Right, so speaking, or thinking about this process, the administrative work on this feels like this could drag out for months.
Because it's prescriptive as it relates to when it has to be done. Once you say that the committee, you're directing to, we want a committee to start, then that starts the timeline.
I think the administrative work in establishing what the committee's going to do and what are the parameters of the committee could drag out for months. That's what we're talking about.
No, that's already spelled out in the procedures.
Okay, but I thought you said that we needed to do that work before we could let people know about this committee.
Well, that's what we said, have that all ready by our first meeting in January.
So what, two different things are being talked about.
Like, we're not trying...
What the committee has to do is spelled out. Who will be chosen for the committee is where you need some parameters. So on my end, I have to have one building principal, of course, if it's a mascot, it will be the building principal from the mascot, and I have to have two teachers. One teacher is a part of the building and then another teacher could just be a PCEA teacher. You have to then choose the majority of the members, which would be the two students. We figured that two-student pool would come from the SVA to determine how you choose the two students. Then you have to have four community members and you have to have two parents that are representative. So the criteria around, where we're talking through policy, could really dictate, what does that look like? So as you put forth these committee members for these subcommittees, you're able to say, this is a charge of the group, this is, you know, you may have 100 people that say, hey, I want to be a part, and then how are you going to pare those down? So really, that conversation to say, what will that process be?
Correct.
And then once they're chosen, that's already spelled out.
Correct, so, but the administrative work to get to that process has to be done.
Yes, yes.
And if, it sounds like if we're talking about doing this in January, we must do that administrative work now.
And do some, yes, yes.
But I thought, I thought I heard that we don't...
No, no.
But we're not providing, and that's, that's what I'm trying, right.
So when, when could we complete that administrative work by?
By the beginning in January.
So I guess my question is, is can we do that administrative work sooner to let the community have more chance to know about this and then we solicit their input in January? So that they're, they're not, when we have a really short window to solicit people that are part of something that has got so much emotional charge associated to it, as it is for a mascot renaming, or a school renaming, or any of these items, we want to give people more time to participate, not less. And so, if, if we're doing the work by the beginning of January, are we doing that work over the, the break that we have? Is that why the, the, that work can't be done till then? When are the meetings that we're going to have to do that work? Because it's work that has to be done by the board.
No, the, the work is going to be done by the committee and that's the difference, is once we as a board select the four community members and two parents, then, along with Dr. Merritt's staff and the students, they will have to make a determination on what are the meeting times.
Who's, who's leading that committee?
Yeah, but, yeah, so when, it's not the committee that starts the 90-day period.
Yes.
Maybe we pull up the guidelines.
So, so Patrick's question, I, I think, what you're trying to get at is, in order for us to get, who's doing the work for the criteria for the committee?
Correct.
That's the question.
Yeah, that's correct. I'm not trying to say do the committee work now.
Correct.
Because the committee work is, I think, there's a lot...
Also, we don't have people to do that work right now.
It's the parameters of who's going to be on the committee and how, what, what would be expected of people to be on the committee and that, that work is the work that needs...
Right, the board needs to decide who does that work.
Correct. So my ask is to do that work for those parameters.
Are you willing to do that work?
Sure, I'm ready to do that work.
Okay, I can, I can work with you on that one.
I'd like to, to have us have a board committee that could do that work sooner rather than later.
I can start work, I can start working on it, but I can't guarantee it'd be done in two weeks.
So I just want to make sure that we respect her time. She, she cannot work on it right now. If you want to work on it, I'd be happy to work on it with you.
Sure, do we need more than two members, or do we...
I would say two is fine.
Okay.
Yeah, I mean, I'm happy to jump in on it.
And we just have to post the board meetings?
Mm-hmm. Yeah, so we have a special meeting that we would need to do, to work through the details on this, leading up to the next board meeting, that is the 13th? Okay, so we have now three weeks to prepare that materials. So, and that can establish the parameters for what the committee would be to do the renaming and that we can then start, we could publish that on the, on the 14th and start soliciting members to attend and then make the selection first thing in January.
Correct.
Do you want...
Or make the selection, you know, the second week of January.
Yeah, because if you publish it on the 14th, you're going to have people that miss that.
Sure, absolutely. We could do it and we could, we could have people, our next, our board meetings in January are the 10th?
10th and the 24th.
And we come back to school on the...
9th.
Okay. So, and do we need to select the candidates at the board meeting? Who's, who's...
No, no.
See, I think that's everything we're going to have to discuss, because what I see is the policy is pretty clear, but the administrative guidelines, we need to...
And the board's role.
And the board's role versus, right, there's...
Administrative guidelines aren't the board's role, so that, that piece is clear. What's not been fleshed out would be the board's decision on how to go about...
Correct.
Right, but part of the, the gap is, there's, there's, there's big gaps in who's doing what, right? There's big gaps in who's actually going to move the for, the, the work forward. And I, I think that's what's causing a lot of the confusion is, so, you know, who's actually leading this, this committee? Is it the superintendent? Is it the board? So that, there's just a lot of lack of clarity on it.
Once the committee, once the committee is formed...
But this just said who's, who appoints it, but there's...
But if you go through the entire piece, I will lead, the superintendent or designee will lead and these will be the members. The minority of the members will be staff, the majority will be appointed by the board under these categories.
Okay, so then, so towards that end, if we were to, for example, close the nominations on the 9th, then the board could select on the 10th.
So the conversation, I will say, that came up at policy, if you're truly trying to get communication and involvement, which your piece speaks about, making every effort to ensure that you have involvement, this time period when people are even checking is at the end of school. So if you're making a window that's December 14th, after the last meeting, and closing when we come back to school on January 19th, the ability, 9th, the ability to get out, educate people around.
We need another reminder once school comes back on January 9th, to remind people, hey...
No, school doesn't come back on the 9th, does it?
Yeah, it does.
Oh, I misunderstood, I thought, sorry. I go back to work on the, on the, on the 3rd, so I...
Kids are, kids are in school till the 23rd.
Perfect, got it, okay. Okay, yeah, that, that makes sense. So we need to do it for the, so we do it at the following board meeting, the, on the 24th, we do a reminder on the 9th, and then we'd solicit more people and then the 24th would be when we would, so, because I think the, it says here, the board should make those selections.
Right.
Correct.
So either a special meeting or a part of the, that, that meeting on the 24th, we would select the committee members.
Yeah.
Correct.
Okay, so that works, because then, then we've got everything all done and we don't have just a super compressed time period. We've given people almost a month and a half to express their interest in this process.
Does anyone disagree with that?
And then in that subcommittee, we may need to have special meetings leading up to that, that are, if, if, I mean, if we have a thousand people that express interest in this, then we have to have a way to winnow those down.
Yeah, that was the, the idea of have that criteria set up.
Right. So we can do that work as the, as the committee preparing to that before the 14th. I'm sorry, before the, the board meeting on the 13th, I mean.
So does the conversation, we just have help and pushing it forward, the problem that we have with the mascot?
It does, I mean, at, at the end of the day...
It's not punting it.
It's not punting it, at the end of the day, I don't know if this is an official directive, per, but, but it's, it's moving the work forward, which is the most important thing, right?
It's forward right now.
Yeah. So, yeah. I mean, it's irrelevant whether it's a official directive, as long as we're moving the, the work forward, that's, that's the most important.
The timing, we would, we'd be starting on the 24th of January is when the 90 days would start.
Right.
Because that would be when we officially select the committee.
Yeah, there's just still a lack of clarity, which we'll deal with later. I think we have to dig into these guidelines, because there's still a lack of clarity. Giving a directive doesn't mean that the committee actually launches. So there's, there's still a, a lot that we need to discuss.
So I think that part of it is because this was a new policy.
Correct.
Like, we didn't have policy around this. And so like anything, once you start working with it, you see where those gaps are.
Correct.
And like this, like, we spent, we spent months on this. Dr. Liz is like, yes, we did.
On the policy or, or, it wasn't in tandem with the guidelines, though.
It was.
It was. So we spent a long time on this and got some of the gaps, but like, we didn't really address how you pick committee, like, because, you know, sometimes you ask for committee members and you get two people.
Right.
And then, but what if you don't?
No, look, it's, it's a fair point. It's the first time we're implementing it. You're going to find the gaps every time you, you go do it.
Oh, yeah.
You're going to find the gaps every time you go to do it, so I think it'll be a learning process.
This is not the first request we've had. We had a request at school and we need to, we need to work through all these things. And I think that was really prudent of us to establish a formal policy, because these are long-ranging impacts that have potential substantial costs. So, and emotional impact.
But I don't think we should have, and it's in hindsight, but I don't think we should have then said every opposite year, because then it provided a gap where we could actually address the past requests.
We could have started this in September.
Correct.
It's hindsight vision. I mean, because I think we passed the policy in the summer, correct?
I don't remember.
Okay.
Yeah, okay.
But, yeah, I mean, it's...
I think we're in a good spot.
We'll work through the process.
All right.
Perfect.
All right, follow-up board questions? Is this the amazing Diane who printed the board question? Thank you.
Yeah, she is amazing, isn't she?
All right, so let's see. The board would like additional updates regarding the district efforts to address staffing shortages. We received those?
We received some of them, but I think that in our, some of our conversations, there's more work and plans that would come, correct? We've got the shortages, per se, but...
So this question was initially dealing with what we're doing to address staffing. And we did board notes and did subsequent presentation here. And then continued on with like the incentive that you approved this evening.
Approved this evening.
So I believe that this question, as presented, was satisfying.
Thought I heard, I'll follow up with you offline.
Okay.
So are we leaving this on or...
No, I think this can come off.
Yeah, I'm not, I think it's been, but if, obviously, if there's a new request, you can just email.
I'll follow up offline.
Okay, perfect. And then enrollment, after reviewing, developing a recommendation, Superintendent Merritt will share suggested strategy timelines, and more work is being done to address enrollment through board notes.
So this is still a standing item?
Okay. All right, and then we added today a request from members to do the research. That was aligned with Ms. Graham's presentation. And then also I requested the evaluation from the community sessions be sent to us in board notes.
Yeah, and Patrick asked for credentials.
With the credentials due.
What the educational credentials were. And then on the first four new courses, I believe one of those is an expansion or an evolution of the existing course. And I just want to make that clear, because all the other ones were actually very clear, that one wasn't.
And I'd just like to add clarity to my request. It was not just for the board, it was also for the community. So if possible, to add those resources in terms of research to the presentations of people at home who are watching. And if you're following the agenda on the presentation, you have access to those as well.
Dr. Lilly is nodding that she will get that done.
Thank you.
Question on the board goals, there was also a request to add a little snippet.
Oh, yeah, add.
I'll coordinate that to make sure, I think I understand.
Yeah, like what the board wants.
I'll give you my, you know, tentative format.
Yeah, the role of the board. That was the note I had on my...
In the half a space with the R, correct.
Alignment.
Alignment, that's right. All right, any, anything else?
I want to wish everyone a safe and enjoyable Thanksgiving break.
Oh, and by the way, so the reason I asked everyone to name their favorite dishes, because I expect you to drop that off to my house.
I thought you were, I thought you were getting your recipes ready.
Setting everyone up, that's right. We won't do any cooking at the Wilson household, thanks to everybody.
A lot of, a lot of...
Dressings.
Desserts.
Lot of dressing.
Rolls, mashed potatoes.
Mashed potatoes and mac and cheese.
That's right.
That's all you need.
It's all carbs, all the time.
That's right, no meat. This is going to be a great Thanksgiving.
You don't really need the meat.
All right, we will officially adjourn at 9:53 PM.
Thank you.
Thank you, everyone.
You don't need the meat, it's just, it's just...